Here, salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meetings through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Deb, do we have any citizens' input?
We do not, ma'am.
Would anyone wish to speak on the proposed fiscal 2024 budget for the Farver Public Schools? I think I'm supposed to say it three times.
Yes, sir.
Again, would anyone like to comment or speak on the proposed 2024 annual budget of the Farver Public Schools? And again, the 2024 annual budget of the Farver Public Schools, would anybody like to comment? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I get a second?
Second.
Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Adjourned. Okay. The Instructional Subcommittee was held on May 1st, this past two Mondays ago, I believe, 2023. All Subcommittee members were present, Mr. Agia, myself, and Ms. Pereira. There were four items on the agenda. An update of health curriculum, a discussion to vote and refer to full committee, the MLL corrective action plan, a discussion to vote and refer to full committee, the ELA middle school curriculum adoption, and a discussion to vote and refer to full committee, the new teacher project partnership. Ms. Sharp from the Health Department discussed the elementary, middle, and high school curriculums and made us aware of some recent challenges regarding scheduling issues that have affected some of our middle school population. This was discussed in length and is being addressed. Ms. Zagarella discussed the associated course with both, the Wonders MLL K-5 curriculum and the WIDA, the WIDA model, computer-based test for first through 12th grade MLL students. It will be administered two times a year to provide teachers with current data across four language domains and monitor students' progress. The Subcommittee voted to refer to the full committee. Ms. Kennedy presented a timeline and process summary of how two ELA piloted programs, Amplify and Springboard, were used across grade levels and at every school since 2022. This process was in-depth and included both student and faculty surveys. Amplify was the curriculum that 72.7% of teachers recommended. This past March, the ELA department was awarded the Gleam Grant to support this new curriculum. The Subcommittee voted to refer to the full committee. Dr. Curly discussed the New Teacher Project, which will include professional development, capacity building, and three identified areas: new teacher support, teacher leadership, school instructional leadership teams. The Subcommittee voted to refer to the full committee. Thank you. Next, item five is the Superintendent's Report. Ms. Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of updates for the committee. The first being Skills USA State Competition Update. Chef Geller and Chef Michaels, who serve as the advisor and chaperone, had the pleasure of bringing 21 students to the Skills USA State Conference. This conference includes a variety of opportunities for our students, which includes professional development, leadership training, and skills competitions. I'm proud to report that Durfee High School brought home quite a few medals. Esalen Rivera placed first in culinary arts and received a gold medal. Leila Cardozo and Kayden James placed first in aesthetics and received gold medals. Abdul Basit placed first in the state T-shirt competition and received a gold medal. Thousands of students who attended there competed in the states and all received one of Abdul's T-shirts. That was his recognition. Morgan Hermangildo and Alexandria LaPointe placed second in nail care and received silver medals. And Bruno Lobo, Darwin Herrera, and Milionet Barrios placed third in community service competition and received bronze medals. Congratulations to all. These students have all put in countless hours of hard work and dedication, and their hard work has paid off. Additionally, their instructors have taken the extra time and care to prepare their students for such a journey, and we thank them. We can now proudly boast that Durfee has the best culinary arts, best nail care, aesthetics, and T-shirt design students in the state. The gold medalists will be headed to Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia, in June to compete to be the first in the country, the best in the country. Each state sends a representative, the gold medalist, for each category to compete. Durfee High School happens to have two students representing the state and competing for Nationals. To say we are proud of our hilltoppers would be an understatement. Durfee is well represented by these fine hilltoppers. So congratulations to all. Also, in your binders, you will find an end-of-the-year activities calendar. As we approach the end of the year, we have created a master list of some of the end-of-the-year activities occurring throughout the district. For your information, they're listed by date and by school. These are the major events. There are lots of things going on throughout the district. We invite you all to attend as many as your schedules allow. And Durfee Fields usage, I know that there were some questions regarding that. If you notice, I know that there have been pictures that have been posted on social media. The practice football soccer field, hockey softball, baseball diamond field is now complete. Gorgeous. The varsity baseball field is now 80% complete. The football stadium is now 60% complete and will be delivered by May 31st, just in time for graduation. And Field Five, the JV softball baseball field, is in design. We will not be renting the fields to go outside, to outside vendors for the remainder of this calendar year so that we can allow our Durfee students to be the first group to use the new turf fields. We'll resume the rental program in 2024 with all vendors. It is important to note that facilities and operations, we're going to look at the fee structure and offerings and hopefully bring to the facility Subcommittee and then hopefully to the full committee to look at, to see if any adjustments need to be made now that we have these new fields up and running. And finally, a hiring update for this year. This is a very, very busy time for us. Since our last school committee meeting, we have had 51 hires through this past Friday, 51 teachers, 15 teachers, I'm sorry, I wish, 15 teachers, three administrative positions, 16 paraprofessionals, seven educational support positions, and 10 operational support positions. Conversely, we have had 18 resignations and four, we're anticipating four retirements. In regards to recruitment, we previously shared with the committee that we had two recruitment events in the last month, one local that attracted over 50 people. We also attended the Bridgewater State University recruitment event, which had over 90 attendees. We have also contracted with some outside advertising, including an electronic billboard at the Brockton exit on Route 24. We're hoping to bring some people on board as we try to attract some people from that area. So we are in the midst of the hiring season, and hopefully we're going to be bringing people into our district within the next few months, and that's it.
Thank you, Superintendent. Discussion? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just related to the fields, I think one of the things that, I do think they look great, so that's, you know, we're getting, I think, a good bang for our dollar. One of the things that I questioned in my head, and we haven't spoken about this, but I think it's a real issue, is the decision to make them not available to anybody in the community for the year so that our students could start there. Having worked in the field and worked for nonprofits and baseball leagues throughout the time, they do a service to the kids in Farver as well. And I feel like, I was never asked, I don't think anybody in the committee was asked, but if the fields are ready to go, they're safe, they're, you know, done, I don't see why we wouldn't allow some of our nonprofit groups that use the facility to use the facility. Some of the money came from the city on a bond for the baseball field, but other funds came from the school department. But regardless, at the end of the day, they're the city of Farver Fields. And I, for one, feel like that decision should be looked at. We need to get even more facts on what happened. I don't know how it happened. When did we tell people? How, whatever the facts are, but I'll speak for myself as one member of the committee. I'm not in favor of leaving perfectly good fields just for the sake of letting the Durfee students play on it. We have nonprofit groups, and I think we should support them as well if they traditionally have always used our fields. I think it's, you know, sort of just inappropriate to tell them, "Sorry, these fields are beautiful, paid for by the taxpayers, but we can't, you can't use it for a year. Go find somewhere else." It's not as easy running a nonprofit baseball, basketball, soccer league, or whatever, a football league. So I, for one, just want to voice my displeasure with that decision, with that I yield.
Thank you. Next up, student comments, student delegate report. We don't have one tonight. Next, we have approval of minutes, item is number seven. I'd like to hear a motion on approval of minutes for the special meeting of the Farver School Committee on 3/29/23.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, and a discussion on 3/29/23. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. I'd like to have an approval in a motion on the minutes of 4:03, a special meeting of the Farver School Committee from April 3rd. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, discussion. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve 7.3, 7.4, and 7.5, approval of minutes.
Second.
I want to take them all at once? Okay. I got a motion, a second, on the other binding items.
Is that okay? Is that okay?
I know, is it okay, Bruce?
Yes, just naming the May 15 regular meetings, I'm sorry, the 4-3 regular meeting, 4-10 regular meeting, as well as the 4-11 meeting and the last.
The special meeting on 4/24. All right, we have them all bundled. I have a motion and a second. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number eight is approval of travel requests. We have a number of travel requests.
Motion to approve travel requests as stated?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, on all travel requests. Any discussion on travel requests? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, one question.
Mr. Agia?
Just when I see the things like Canterbury Lake Park and the, like, I recall at one point there being a policy saying that all trips needed to be educational. Do we still have that, such a policy?
We'll have to, we have to look, but at the end of the year, we have people going to the zoo or to, they tie it in, but we'll, we'll look at that.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm, listen, they work hard all year, I'm not trying to be opposed to it, but I want to say we had a debate a few years back about the policy. So if that's the case and it's violating a policy, I want the kids to have fun, they earned it, they work hard, but if we're violating a policy, we should either switch the policy or not do the trip, with that I yield.
Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. We only have a couple of them. Actually, we have one, two. Can I get a motion, a second, on donations?
Motion to accept?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, on donations. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Superintendent Potts?
On behalf of Laterno School, Principal Sean Sipson accepts a donation from the Dover Church of $5,000 to be used for classroom libraries. And also, on behalf of early childhood pre-K, Director Kristen Farias accepts a donation of $500 from PC Plus. We thank both donors.
Thank you. Item number 10, is 10.1, is the approval of contracts.
I have one to keep.
Now, if, we'll do the ones that are left. If anybody has any, you let me know, and I'll star them. Which one, Ms. Larrabee?
The Brightview Landscapes.
Okay, we'll hold Brightview Landscapes. Anybody have another one?
Question?
Mr. Agia?
Are these contracts for approval, as I've asked before, or are these already done?
Which, which ones, do you have any specifically, Mr. Agia?
So what I'm, what I'm asking is that
Did we already buy the stuff yet?
Two, three months ago, I mentioned this, that it shouldn't, nothing should show up on here for our vote that has already been signed, agreed to, whatever, so that we know what we're, is it a permission to pay, or is it a permission to
Buy.
To buy it or provide the service? And I think that we really, we should have done this already, but it should be very clear. These are, these are the ones we are just asking for the payment versus these are the ones we're asking for the permission. So I don't want to say, yes, we'll go through all these if I had a question, but
These are marked as new. These are all marked as new.
So none of these are agreed to? So if this committee at one point said, "We don't want to approve this contract," we don't lose anything?
Right.
Everybody wants to agree to that?
Okay. What do you, anybody else got any other holds?
Can we hold John Guilfoyle Public Relations, which is on page two? It's under grants. I don't know if we're doing them all at once, but I'm assuming
That's a contract.
These are contracts, first, Mr. Agia.
The new ones are at the top.
New ones are at the top?
Which one, Mr. Agia?
He said John Guilfoyle.
John Guilfoyle.
Is that, that's under grant contracts?
Yeah, it's underneath, one, two, three, it's like fifth one down.
Yep.
So question, are we doing new, or are we doing?
We'll do them all, but I want anybody to have a We'll do them all, but I want anybody to have a say on whatever one they want to talk about.
We were just told that these are all new.
Right.
Which we were told two months ago, and it wasn't the case. So I'm just trying to be a little cautious that, don't just say it's all, they're all new if we don't know that they're all new. But I brought up a contract that was supposed to be able to be spoken to and we approved the payment for the service from three months earlier. So that's why I just asked, are we sure that this is what we're?
These are new.
All new, okay. So we have two holds right now, Brightview Landscape and John Guilfoyle. Any other holds? All right, I'll entertain a motion and a second on the rest.
Motion made.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yeah.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. First one on hold is Brightview Landscapes, Ms. Larrabee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Ken. I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So after going through the reorg situation with facilities.
Yes.
We've, the committee agreed to add four, I mean, four more groundskeepers and a supervisor. But I am aware that all those positions are not full. But what kind of concerns me is a little is, this is a one-year contract. So if we're pushing, going to try to push through getting, filling these positions, why would we dial into a one-year contract with a landscaping company if we're going to have the staff in position as this, you know, groundskeeping department, I should say?
Okay. So when we did bring up the additional four people in grounds, we had our spirited debate and someone said to me, "Is that enough? Is four going to be enough?" And I said at the time, I won't know that, obviously I don't, you know, I'm using parameters of what I see as the workload. So we're taking on all the schools that we do nothing with now. So they're not, I mean, we do a little bit of Henry Lord, but Henry Lord custodians still do work. We do a little bit of CUS, but there are CUS custodians who still do cutting. So the idea is to take away all of that work from the custodians, so that custodians can just take care of their buildings. That's one piece of this. The second piece is the Durfee campus. So the Durfee campus is, we've got a lot of curb appeal, we get a lot of good comments. But it didn't take long this year before everything started growing. And to try and keep up with that, with the four people, and do the work that they were already doing, not touching the schools that haven't been touched yet, just keeping up with Lord, CUS, not much of Talbot, that's being taken care of, and trying to stay on top of those, and then take care of Durfee, lining the field, North Park for baseball, Sylvia Soccer, and our softball field. It's a lot. And then a wet month gave us a little bit more headaches. So what I'm asking, why I'm asking for this, is I can't gauge how much time it's going to take me to do the remaining work, the new work. So let's forget about Durfee for one second. I can't gauge how much time it's going to take me to do twelve buildings of work that I don't do now. Because the intent was, is that we wanted to bring those buildings back to the way they were when they were turned over by me to the school side after construction. They were landscaped, they had mulch, they were edged, plenty of shrubberies. The grass was growing, pristine. And if you go through the schools now, that's not happening. It's not the fault of the custodians who were taking care of it, but that was a side deal for them. That wasn't their main job. Landscaping, building and grounds altogether wasn't working. So we asked to split that up. By splitting it up, that group can concentrate strictly on landscaping and working on the grounds of the buildings. I believe that I need enough time. I guess what I'm asking with this contract is to give me until this time next year to have my four people, new, trained, at the four people who are going to take care of the fields, that's all they're going to do. And at that point, I can come back here and give you that assessment, that eight people is enough, and that we can take Durfee back over at the expiration of the contract, which will be June and moving forward. But I can't do that right now because realizing how much work was done by the landscaper. We haven't cut Durfee grass since the building was built. It was covered under the contract. And we still have two months left of contract on Phase Two, which is around the tennis courts and that area. Come July, we own it all. And between the inside courtyards, all of the landscaping in the front of the building, the other side of the building that, that touches that area in the, in the road behind the school, the fire road, and then the extra two parking lots, all the islands in the, in the north parking lot, it takes a lot of time and it takes a lot of work. And to just cut grass and eventually have that look not like it should for a brand-new building, wasn't what I thought we should do. As part of what Mr. Agia had asked me to do about a cost analysis on private and hiring more people, as part of that, we got some numbers. And I will deliver that report at the next meeting in full as to what I, I think that that should look like. You'll see the numbers. If Durfee High School is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars or a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to do, I'm going to tell you that there is no way a private contractor is going to be able to bid low enough to take care of all the landscaping needs that we need to add on. And a couple of choices we have, we can have the custodians continue doing what they're doing and not put those four bodies on. Or we can give me the, the amount of time from now until June or May meeting of next year, so that I can figure out exactly what it's going to take to take care of Durfee proper, and then the rest of the buildings, and get those buildings slowly but surely up to where they were when they were built with the landscaping. So that's my request, that's why this is here. I haven't hired anybody. I'm not going to hire anybody until I have the director in place, because I feel that that director is going to have to live with whoever walks in the door. And they may not be able to pick who they have, but they will be able to pick all those new people who are going to be hired. And in that interview process, so.
So we don't have the four new people? So the job descriptions are complete, are the jobs posted?
So the job, the director's jobs are posted, they're all up right now. As soon as that person is hired, then we will hire out.
So we're not even, we're not there yet?
For the other four, no, we're not there yet.
Okay. Did, were there three bids for the, for this?
So this is state contract. So it's off of, it's off of comp buys on the landscaping. And that is, that is the bid document. All the items that are on here have already been bid. It's a prevailing wage job because of who we are.
Okay.
So it's all part of that contract.
So you think you need a year to figure out?
Well, understanding that we're going to, so we're going to have two cleanups at the end of the year from this company. Any of the dead trees that are still under warranty will be replaced by this company, not in this contract, but outside the contract. So we do have probably half a dozen trees that didn't make it through the winter. Some were windburned. We were hoping they were going to come back, they didn't. And some of them were, you know, were just, didn't make it. And then there's flowers that need to be added, just a few more shrubs within the confines, and then the, the, all of the mulching, cutting the edges of beds, and that's what, so this contract includes weekly cuts. So that group will be here weekly, taking care of everything, including the courtyards.
Just at Durfee?
Just at Durfee. No grass, so they won't go into the, so in the, in some of our fields, the artificial turf fields, even the, not the new one, but the two older ones, there is grass to cut. We still have Field Five up on the hill to cut at Durfee. And we will still have some grass to cut at the upper parking lot. So this covers, it's easy to say the new construction. That's what this contract covers.
So we wouldn't be interested in maybe doing a, can we do a six-month contract? Would that be an option? Because what if we do hire these, these next four groundspeople in a month? And you're able to train them in two months? And then we're paying a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for a year of landscaping where maybe our groundskeepers can, you know, fulfill the duties? Like, what do we do? You know, we're paying a lot of money.
I understand. And if that's what the committee would like to do, then I can go back to them and ask them for a six-month contract.
I mean, it's just fine, I mean, maybe a suggestion is what I'm.
I don't know if, I don't know if I'm, if in six months from now, that we're going to have those four people up and running like a finely tuned machine. I don't have equipment yet for them, so we have a few pieces, but.
Right.
It's not like we're set up to have eight people working at the same time. We have equipment for different kinds of jobs, but we don't have everything ready for the four more. If that's, if that's the will of the committee, then I can, I mean, I'm going to live with, if the answer was no, then I have to make do. I, I can tell you that Durfee's not going to look like it looks, like it looked last year, because I don't have the manpower to do that, just that. They come down, it's eight people, they go right through the building, and they're done in a day. We're not going to be able to be equipped to do that, that quick, with everything else they have to do.
Thank you, I yield for now.
Any other questions for Mr. Pacheco? Ms. Pereira?
Are there projects that you have to do, Mr. Pacheco, like, within the next couple of months, that if you didn't have these guys, would cause an issue?
We've just got.
Like, as far as making things?
Yeah, we're doing a, probably a week and a half project at Henry Lord for the chiller, the new chiller building. We're going to put a retaining wall up, cut some area there. We've got some demolition to do on the old chiller outside that property, but I'm trying to keep that out of the project to save money on the construction project. So we're going to do that in-house. There isn't a lot of other items. I, I think that what, sometimes what gets lost with the groundskeepers is the fact that they put up the scrim, they put up the netting, they take down the scrim, they take down the netting. It's a couple of days worth just putting up the stuff for the basket, for the tennis courts, the scrim for the tennis courts. So there's a lot of other stuff that they end up doing besides that doesn't quite fit into anywhere else for the athletic department. And then the striping of the fields is part of their work. So it's not just cutting the grass. But projects, projects, just that one at Henry Lord.
And the, and the estimated time in hiring these four groundsmen and training them and getting their equipment?
I'm hoping to have everybody ready for July one.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further for Mr. Pacheco? Mr. Agia?
So you had said something about two months, that the current, like, what is this building project paying for, for the services of this company? You said they were, this is the company that did the original?
So this is the contract of record, yes.
When did that contract run out?
So the contract is going to run out in August for Phase Two work. Phase One work is all of the work around Durfee, all the way down through the parking lot in the north end, the Ring Road, and the road heading up towards Spencer Borden, that's Phase Two. So that's what they're taking care of. The trees that are on, the trees that are in the area leading up to the hill near the pace, that's Phase Two. And a couple of trees in the back of the building near the gymnasium are Phase Two.
So.
So they own that for two months, two to three months more.
But in addition to that, they have been doing all of this work that you just mentioned?
No, they haven't.
So who's been doing that?
So that work has been done up to date, not to today. So, so I had them come in on Saturday for a flat fee to catch up Durfee, so that I can have that work ready for graduation, because I don't want the school to look the way it does right now.
This company?
Yes.
And we brought our guys in too?
I'm, I'm sorry?
The in-house guys were overtime too?
The in-house guys didn't work overtime at Durfee. They cut other grass on overtime.
All right. So I'm just a little confused on who actually did this work once the Durfee opened?
This company, under warrant, under contract. We bought two years of contract, eighteen months worth of contract is what we bought.
And how much was that contract?
You're looking at it. This contract here that you're seeing was the work that they had to do under contract for us, as part of the building contract, under Suffolk's contract.
So when I look at it, it says April one, it has twenty thousand dollars a month, twenty-one thousand dollars a month, twenty-one thousand.
So on April one, just a little bit before April one, is when I started having the conversation with Brightview, looking for the information for your request. So I said, "Could you send me a document that would show what it would cost to cut Durfee and take care of Durfee just as you're doing during construction?" Because that's exactly what we need to do, with the mulching, the edging, and all of that. So that's what this document is. This is exactly what was done during all the construction phases with them.
So the one sixty-eight, whatever the, is that what it is?
Yes. One sixty-eight, one sixty-six.
So that's the middle year of this, on this document?
No, that's the first year. This is, this document belongs to us. This is, I don't have the contract from Suffolk. That's none of my business, that's on the Suffolk side. What this is, is everything they did for Suffolk as part of the contract when they built the building.
Right, but wouldn't that be relative to why we, what we should be looking at?
That's what it is. This contract here is all the work. If you go into the, into the description of the work, that's exactly what was in our bid.
Yeah, but you just mentioned something about trees, like they were going to.
So dead tree, so dead trees get replaced?
But they would have had to plant the trees as part of the contract? Like, if they're responsible now to fix the dead tree, theoretically they were.
They're responsible for fixing the dead trees in Phase Two.
But theoretically, they were paid to fix the dead trees.
And we're not paying for that. That's not in here.
But it's the same amount of money you're saying. So in the current Phase Two, you're saying they did the trees, whatever the areas were, and?
It's the landscaping, it's not the planting of the trees. What this is, is a replacement. So they own all of the work in Phase Two for another few months. If there are dead trees, they have to replace them at no cost to the district. When that phase ends, Brightview is not on site anymore. When they were originally hired, the whole landscaping package was a million bucks, two million, maybe more?
And you're telling me they're saying that this was the amount that they were charging?
So this is what, so this is what the work is. So the dollar amount, I'm guessing, they have to pay prevailing wage no matter when they're coming to Far River. So working for Suffolk, they still have to pay prevailing wage. It's, it's state money. It's, it's state money. So they would have had to pay prevailing wage to do exactly this. What happens is, every company buys, like Suffolk wants warranties. So they buy an extra year of warranty. And that's because a lot of trees fail. A lot of vegetation fails during construction, for a variety of reasons. So they buy the extra year, which is what they did, and they did exactly what they were doing in that extra year, is what we're looking to have done at Durfee.
So, you're saying you just want to make a continuation for a year from what they...
Exactly.
Did. But what's presented to us here in this package?
Yes.
Does, it contradicts that. Because it says here it's $20,000 a month.
Yes.
In here. So $20,000 a month times 12 is not 168.
They don't work 12 months.
But where in the contract, I guess what I'm asking, I'm thinking that...
The cutting period, the cutting period and the cleanup period are not 12 months. We don't, they don't work in February. They're not doing snow removals. So they're not working in January, they're not working in February. They come in late in March. They're not working in December, they're not working in November. They probably do their last cleanup mid-October to late October. So it's three to four months, so it's an eight-month contract.
But there's still work that needs to be done in, in the year-round of some, we're not just going to totally...
But we're not asking them to, but that's not the contract. What I'm asking them to do is landscaping. They're not picking papers. That's still going to be done in-house. They're not going to do any snow removal whatsoever. And in the spring, they'll change the mulch, clean the beds, replant. In the fall, they'll be picking leaves, making the final cuts. That's what the contract is. So it's eight, eight-and-a-half months, more or less, is what they would do as landscape service, no different than home landscape service. Runs just about the same. They don't do year-round unless you're asking them to be your snow removal company, too.
Right. Just as, I'm reading it, it says policing and collecting litter from lawns and beds, dispose in the dumpster. To me, that's, it's cleaning up some trash.
Well, I'm sure that they're not going to cut grass and leave papers and cut, cut them up with the lawnmower and leave them all over the place. My guess is, is that statement is they're going to pick stuff up, and whatever they pick up, they're going to dispose of on site.
Yep. And we have this already paid for by the building committee through August?
In Phase Two only. There's a couple of spots in Phase Two only. It's not the whole thing. The lease ended, I mean, the two years ended for the building project, for all of Phase One, ended last cutting season. So coming into this new cutting season, Brightview has not been on-site except for Saturday, when I asked them to come down and get started on graduation prep.
Right. So, I personally would like to see that before I agree to anything with them, to know what have we been doing each month of time?
Nothing. We haven't been doing anything.
So we just let it, we got, we pay a grounds crew, and we just let it go? That's what you're telling us?
Miss Agia, what I'm telling you is, is that up until this year, we haven't done anything on Durfee proper.
But this year? So it's May?
It's May.
And you're saying we did nothing?
And in April, and in April, we were picking papers. We haven't added any mulch. We have no mulch anywhere. We don't put mulch in anywhere.
We have a current grounds crew. And, and I'm having a hard time just hearing that we, oh, we had a grounds crew, but we didn't do some of these things.
We didn't do anything at Durfee, other than cut grass when it got too high. That's the only thing we did this year. We cut the, the grass inside the two courtyards because we wanted to be sure that early childcare didn't have an issue with high grass, and that we do have a couple of events that will use the courtyards as an area for that event. So we did take care of those two items. We did cut the grass in different areas, but just cut it. But we didn't touch the beds. We haven't edged the beds. We haven't done anything with the flower beds, nor have we done anything with trimming shrubs, replanting stuff. We haven't done any of that work.
Right. And I guess we just, probably just going to agree to disagree. But when we have a grounds crew, and we have a school, whether it's a brand-new school or an old school, I don't feel comfortable when somebody says, we haven't done any of that work. We need to do that work. We need to make sure that they're doing that work. I don't understand how we can say that they can't...
But that's not what I'm, that's not what I said, Miss Agia.
You said we didn't do anything.
What I said was Durfee proper, the Durfee High School.
Yeah.
Okay, there are sixteen other buildings that I take care of.
But we had a Durfee before, Mr. Pacheco.
And, and it looked nothing like this one, believe me. When I walked here and walked into this job, Durfee grass was just grass. There was no shrubs.
And how many groundskeepers did we have when you walked in here?
Three.
I beg to differ. We've added, doubled the groundskeepers, since I've been back on the committee.
So we only had two, is what you're saying, to cut all the grass?
Whatever it is.
And I can understand why it looked the way it did.
But we doubled it. And I'm just saying, all I'm saying is, is that we have to do something with it. We just can't have, oh, we'll just go out and hire. Like I told you before, I think that the hiring more people, all the work that's in here is not necessarily something that we can't hire people from Far River to do. Cutting beds, we don't have people that are qualified and companies that cut beds.
As long as they're willing to pay prevailing wage to their help, as long as they will document that they're going to do that, because every single person who works for the city, school department, have to pay prevailing wage. So we can't just hire anybody to do this work.
Right. When did it go out to bid?
It didn't.
So that anybody could actually say, hey, you know what? This might be something I'd look at. It didn't go out to bid. I'm not saying it was illegal, because you have a right to go to the state contract. But at the same time, is we got people here that could have bid on a project. If these people wanted to bid, then so be it. If you bid, you have to say, I'm going to pay prevailing wage. But we're going to an outside company without asking our in-house people. But we'll probably just agree to disagree. But when you say that the custodians are not going to cut the grass anymore, has that been removed from the contract?
It hasn't been removed from the contract. What I'd like them to do is more of their work, so I can cut down on some of the overtime that we have to pay when it comes time to do that work in the summer. They have a terrible, their summers are absolutely awful, with the amount of use that our buildings get. They clean a room and it's occupied the next day. And teachers are not coming into a building that looks pristine, because we use them all summer. So the custodians are working twice as hard, trying to keep those buildings in good shape. And we're not helping them by having them go outside and cut grass. They shouldn't have to go outside and cut grass. But I don't have the amount of people to do that at sixteen other buildings.
But I agree with you, and you know I agree with you even before the negotiations, that that should have been taken out. But it wasn't. I voted against the contract. It didn't get out of the contract.
I'm going to tell you, I'd be very surprised if I have custodians who are going to argue about cutting grass.
We put it, we kept it in a contract that says their responsibility is to cut grass. Did we or did we not?
Yes.
So now we're saying...
But it isn't our responsibility to give out overtime, willy-nilly. So that's what we do in the summertime, is we give out overtime in order to cover... Well, when they're cutting the grass, they're not cleaning the building. So when we fall behind, I, I got, I can prove that. When we fall behind, all of that work gets put on overtime.
I don't disagree, the custodians shouldn't have that in their contract. But with all due respect, it was kept in the contract via negotiations. So now we're told, we got to pay this contract so that we don't have to do that, which is in the contract. To me, I don't, I don't, I just don't see it. I think we need to take a much stronger look at what we're doing, how we're doing it. I'd like to request a, a weekly schedule, a detailed weekly schedule for all of our groundskeepers. Because what you're saying is that they're doing all of these things, which that would prove it, to show, here's all the places that they have to go, what they got to do, to see if it's actually something that is overly clear, or is it not? What do they do every day so that we know, okay, here's what it is? I have this school to do, I have that school to do. I'm sure that there's got to be a schedule of what they do and where they go, and some sort of record of what the current groundskeepers do all day, every day, I would assume. Mrs. Buns, would you agree? That should be a...
So, so what you're saying is, is that you want FNO to provide you with weekly work schedules? Is there any other department in the school department that's going to do that? Or you satisfied with everyone else's work? I, I apologize, but I feel, right now, that FNO is under fire. And if it is, then by all means. I'd like the committee to vote on that, so that I can make sure that I'm following every single rule. Because I think it's excessive.
Yep.
And you know very well that the amount that this department has suffered over the last ten, twelve months, with shortages in leadership, is half of the issue.
What does that have to do with...
It's got everything to do with it.
Well, I beg to differ. So do I think, do I think that the FNO department needs a very close look on a number of things? Yes. I'll say that as a committee member, yes. And I'll tell the superintendent, like I've already told her, that I'm concerned about some of the decisions that have been made in those departments. Yes, I have said that. So when I ask something very basic, like a work schedule, I think everybody in the committee would benefit from seeing that. So we have...
I wouldn't.
So we have groundskeepers.
No.
Nope.
Sorry.
Wait, can we get back to this?
Yes.
This, this contract?
It is definitely related to the Brightview contract. Because this is a contract that we're going to make a decision to pay $20,000 a month. And I'm trying to get to the bottom of, when does it start? What do we do?
Let's stay on the contract. Go ahead.
So that's, it, it's pertinent, because...
No, you're asking for a work schedule for the regular four employees.
How can any member understand whether this is, they're just overly worked totally? It's totally relevant to the fact of whether we need to hire four more, five more, three more, a private contractor? It's totally relevant. It's absolutely relevant to know what they do every day.
Yeah, I never heard of that in the committee, though. I don't know any, like, I do, I do agree with Mr. Pacheco. I don't get any teacher's schedule, I don't get any cafeteria worker's schedule, I don't get any administrator's schedule.
Do we have any, do we have any teacher's schedules? Of course we do. Teacher's accountable to every day, what they have to do. So, we, we wouldn't say, well, does everybody have a full caseload of classes? That's a very simple discussion. Of course.
Yeah, okay.
You don't think that that's something that, that is very basic? Of course you do.
But I don't know what they're doing on their prep time, what they're doing for work for the district, what they're doing on this...
I'm not asking Mr. Pacheco to tell me when they're on break.
I didn't say on break, I said during their prep time, which is not a break.
So we have, so we have four groundskeepers. Do you think that it's that big a deal to say to them, okay, let's look at the last week? Where were you on Monday? Where were you on Tuesday? Where were you on Wednesday? We do it for all the counselors, we do it for the, so workers, when we apply for Medicaid reimbursement for the state. When we, when we ask people what they do with service and kids on each and every day, we ask people for that. But all of a sudden now, because we're asking a few questions about the facilities and operations, now all of a sudden, whoa, we can't do that. As far as I'm concerned, I asked you for the question, and I'd like to get, I'd like to get that answer, Madam Superintendent, if we could please get that, so we can actually see what it is. I can't make decisions without, without having this. And if anybody else wants to make a decision without the information, that so be it. But I truly think that we need to take a look at it. When we look at what they do every day, I'd be curious to see what happens on the school. I drive by a school in, off Bedford Street, and there's a tree growing on the side of that, a building. There's a tree growing on the side of the building for two years. I would, I would like to, I'm curious as to when the groundskeeper's assigned to go check that out, that they left a tree on that school for two years. I think that's a valid question to ask. I can't see it unless I can see what they do each day. And when we're going to add, you know, during the budget time, I'll have more questions about whether we, how many we add. But relative to this contract, I think it's definitely begging some more information, including the backstory of how it was paid, what Suffolk paid, how much Suffolk paid, because I, I do think that it's an issue. And lastly, I 100% agree that this contract should have gone out so that other people in the community can look at bidding on a job like this, whether it's this year or going forward. We have many people that could have bid on a job like this, but they never even got a chance to bid because it wasn't advertised like that. With that, I yield.
Ms. LaRive?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Agia, I respectfully disagree. I don't think that we should have any day-to-day information on any personnel. I think that's between Mr. Pacheco and, and the superintendent. And if the superintendent wants to share that with us, moving forward, as we do discuss this contract moving forward, I think that's adequate and acceptable. What I do recommend, I know I would like to maybe table this just for tonight, and maybe discuss a six-month, maybe, contract? Because if you're saying that we have them till August, and then they're done, what, November, you said? Maybe the end of October, November, so then they're stalled until the end of March. So if there's something that you can work out with them, and come back and, and just give us some information, I mean, that would be my recommendation.
Second, a motion to table.
So if I can just...
Yes.
So after graduation...
Ms. DeMire.
Is when we will come back here for a meeting to vote on the six months. So, I just...
Yeah, I know, it's in a motion to table, so we can't discuss anymore. Somebody made a motion in a second, and I just want to vote it down. We can't discuss anymore. Deb?
I may have something to say, but that's okay.
Want to call the roll, Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. LaRive?
No.
Ms. Pereira?
No.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
No. So we're still discussing it.
So, yeah, I just, Mr. Pacheco, I'm sorry to make you stand back up. Is it done, Ms. LaRive?
Go ahead, Ms. Pereira.
It's my turn.
You want to go back? You want to talk again?
Okay. So... Well, this is only technically an eight-month contract. We're paying for eight months of services. So we're asking you to leave to negotiate two months down. But we have work that needs to get done right now, that we're currently paying this company to do, to get ready for graduation and such. I'm assuming, I don't know much about gardening or landscaping, but I'm assuming that this is a busy time to get Durfee ready, so we don't fall behind. Is that accurate?
The issue is graduation.
Okay.
Three, four thousand people, two graduations back-to-back. It would be nice to have a, the best crib up here we possibly could. We've got probably 2,500 to 3,000 Diamond family coming here, so...
Of course.
Eight thousand people in, in a week will look at Durfee, that $263 million project, and it would be nice that it looks as good as it did the day we built it.
Absolutely.
And we can't do that without outside help.
I definitely would not buy a million-dollar house and then say I couldn't afford a housekeeper if I couldn't do all the work. Just doesn't make sense. Yes, it has to do with taxpayers' dollars, but they built a beautiful school, I think they want us to keep it that way. Obviously, we're short-staffed, hence why you're hiring more people. Right, so I'm assuming that's why Durfee's falling behind and hasn't been getting tended to, because you were very used to this company taking care of it, because it was already in a contract with us.
Durfee was out of the picture, right. Durfee was out of the picture, and all the rest of the work was being...
It was sort of off your plate, so to speak. These people are taking care of it. They had that recent, that portion of them taking care of it, I'm just trying to make sure I got this in my head. That portion of them taking care of it recently ended, now they're only doing the end of Phase Two, which doesn't have to do with all the landscaping we're talking about.
Right.
So now we're in a situation where, whoa, it was off the plate, now it's back on the plate, but my plate's already full, kind of situation. Okay. I mean, as far as the contract goes, that was something we already voted on. I believe that, that's a union situation. If they negotiated that way, that's fine. Perhaps the reason that they kept cutting grass on there was to make sure they were able to then do it if in need. They had the time or we needed it. That's something that the custodian could do. It's in their contract. If you're asking them to do something out of their contract, that's a whole different situation. Am I accurate there?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. What else? I had one other thing. Oh, yeah. I mean, the only reason I say I don't wanna see the schedules, 'cause quite frankly, it's not that I'm not invested in making the right decision. It's because I don't know what I would make of that. I mean, I don't cut my grass, so if you told me, you know, Sam was cutting the grass at whatever school and it took him two hours, I don't know. Is that appropriate, or should he have, Sam have got that done in twenty minutes? I don't know. I'm lucky. I have two lawn cutters, Gary and Wu. I don't have to do it. So, that wouldn't be useful information to me. And I also think it is slightly micromanaging and also kind of digging in, and I know that's not the intention of my colleague. But if I was one of the custodians, I'd be at home watching this. I'd be thinking, what, he doesn't think I'm doing my job? And I just don't think it's the right forum to do that. I think that's what you're supposed to do. And yes, we do know the teachers' schedules, but we pretty much ask principals, do they have a full load? Yes, yes, okay, that's what we're asking you. I don't know that we need documentation of it. So, I have no issue with voting on this today, because I don't think changing six months to eight months, then we get back here. I mean, if we need it now, we need it now. We have a school that we just spent so much money on. It's beautiful. We are still gonna be having people use it. By the way, what Mr. Agia said earlier, I think we should let nonprofits use it. I'm not really sure why we don't. But we can't let them do that if we don't upkeep it and make sure everything is pretty. So, I would be happy to vote on this today. I don't think it makes it eight, eight months to six months makes a difference. I think we're pushing something back. We're gonna have to pay these people anyway to do all the work that needs to get done before the graduation. So, I don't know. That's my opinion, but that's all I wanted to say. Now, if you all wanna table it to have Mr. Pacico try to get it down to six months, that's fine with me as well.
We already, we already made the motion.
Oh, we already, yeah, I'm sorry.
Table. I'm looking for a motion to approve it.
Well...
Mr. Hart? Mr. Hart?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I, I mean, I was gonna pretty much say what, uh, uh, Ms. Pereira has said, but I'll make a motion to approve the contract from Brightview Landscapes.
I have a motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just a couple things. So, you had mentioned that the contract, just now to Ms. Pereira, that the contract just ran out to do this work. And then earlier, you told me that the contract ran out eight months ago to do the work. So, Phase Two was the...
Phase Two ended...
When?
At the end of cutting season last year.
Which was when?
Let's call it, cutting and cleaning, let's call it October, November.
Right, so we haven't had anyone in place since then.
So, all we've been doing is picking papers and keeping it clean, which is what that season is.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, but it's now the middle of May, and the season is upon us, as you know.
Yes.
And when you were talking about, well, you had to bring them in, how did you bring them in to do the cleanup Saturday? Under what budget item and what mechanism?
It would be just under facilities and operations. It was a small chunk of money. It wasn't anything close to this.
Yep.
All they did was clean up. So, they weren't, they didn't do any edging. They didn't do any of the work. All they did was cut the grass that was overgrown, trimmed around the trees, trimmed along the building, cleaned up the islands.
Right, to get it ready.
All, all of that work, some of that work can't be done during the day, because the parking lot islands can't be cut during the day, because people are there. So, those are all after-hours things or a Saturday. So, when you think about that, Pete...
Whether it's them, you know, whether it's, whether it's that company, so... I'm just having a hard time figuring this out. We hired a private company to pay somebody prevailing wage to come in on a Saturday, to cut around the trees, to do the, basically to do landscaping work, that we could have offered that same work to one of the two-hundred custodians that we have, because it's in their contract to do. So, we hired almost a specialty company, is what I'm hearing, to do basic cleanup at the high school on a Saturday, which I'm sure our custodians would have, at least somebody would have probably said, sure, I'll do it.
I, I can't get them to do the custodian work on overtime, so I just, I'm putting that out there.
Yeah, I hear you, but you get my point, that we're hiring a specialty company to do cleanup.
Because it's specialty work. Cutting the grass is a specialty work. I mean, this is landscaping. This is not cutting your grass and just letting things fly. It is not. They have the right equipment. They're doing landscaping work.
And, and you don't, or Mrs. Ponce, I will ask you, because I don't wanna ask for things that seem excessive. But do you think that it's appropriate to, for us to see what we paid this company to do this work on a Saturday? How is that not relevant to whether we decide how we pay going forward?
Well, we certainly can provide that information.
Sure, and the reason why would be, when we're talking about the graduation in two weeks, three weeks, I understand that we have to make this place look presentable, sure. I wanna make it look great. But I would recommend then, instead of doing this contract, if this got tabled to get more information, whatever we wanna do long-term, that we hire a couple of more times, if it's short money, as you said, to come in, come in and get this place looking spiffy for June third. That's two weeks away. I would rather do that than actually say, well, let's pay for this long-term contract. And I'd also like to ask the superintendent's thoughts on whether she feels that this should go out to bid to give any local people an opportunity to bid on this work. That's a question directly to the superintendent.
It's Mr. Pacico's area of expertise. He's saying he needed the company, so, and that's what we did. So, moving forward, certainly if this committee feels differently, we'll do it differently.
So, that's not a valid question that I asked? Just being honest.
Ms. Agia, I think she answered it.
Yeah, no, I, I...
She answered it. You might have liked to answer it.
Listen, there's no reason for everybody else to defend somebody. I asked a legitimate question to the superintendent.
It's not related to the contract. We're gonna vote on it. We got a motion and a second. We're waiting to vote till you get done with your questions.
So, when I asked the superintendent before the meeting, because I had a question on this today when we talked before the meeting, one of my concerns to the superintendent, I had two concerns. One was the money, and I asked the superintendent, does this all inclusive, including the new field with the zingoni machine to do it all? At the time, she indicated yes. So, I looked at the contract. I went to the superintendent before the meeting and said, this didn't include that. So, she said, oh, no, it didn't. I, she checked with Mr. Pacico, it did not. I then said to the superintendent, was this bid? And she said it was a state contract. So, I said back, well, why wouldn't we give it an opportunity for some people in the community to bid on this work? And she said, that's a valid question before the meeting. So, I'm asking that same question now in public, and the answer that I got from the superintendent was that it's Mr. Pacico's call, not hers.
Right, and we did not. I told you we did not.
I know, but all I asked you was, do you think that it's a valid thing to do, to just do the right thing and put it out to bid? That's what I asked before. That's what I ask now. The answers are two different answers. That's not something that I can, I can comprehend how that is the case. When I look at the rationale for the, this contract versus adding more people, we ask every other department the same thing. Mr. Almeida asked for more people based on the workload, how many payrolls they do, how many work, whatever, like some rationale for what these people do all day.
But I, Ms. Agia, I haven't, I told you I would bring you that cost-benefit analysis. I will bring it to you, and you'll see the dollars and cents.
Okay.
There's nothing to hide.
I, I'm not saying that you do. All I asked, the reason why some members got upset was when I asked for a weekly schedule of what they do, which I didn't think is a big deal. I don't think that's a big deal, especially when we're being asked to add four more. I don't think that's a big deal. That's what I was referring to, not the piece that you're working on, getting a cost-benefit analysis. I think that's a good, cost-benefit analysis cannot hurt anybody. But part of the cost-benefit analysis is to see what it costs. Now, we're gonna lock ourselves into an eight-month contract at a hundred-and-sixty thousand. You might see that information to say, well, it's not gonna match up. We don't have anything yet. I asked last month for it. I didn't get it yet. I understand things take time. But now, we're being asked to pass a contract for a hundred-and-sixty thousand. Can you understand why I would ask that?
I do, but I, what I'm telling you is, is that... Apples and oranges. It is apples and oranges. You wanted to compare the old Durfee to the new Durfee. There is no comparison ever that's gonna make that work, because it's a totally different look. The old Durfee did not have landscaping. The old Durfee was cut and run. That's all it was. And all those fields were just cut and run. I'm not saying they weren't in playable shape, and I'm not saying they weren't. When they weren't underwater, they were playable. It is totally different. And adding those four people is my hope, that I can take care of those fields, take care of Durfee proper, and take care of all the rest of the buildings. Because as I said, it's very difficult to get people to work overtime. They're not lining up. And if I can take away some of the need in those other buildings by having the custodians just do custodial work and allowing groundskeepers to do the groundskeeping work, then I think the district is better off. I think that cost-benefit analysis will play out every day, because it's on straight time and not necessarily on overtime. And if they're not going out in the middle of the day to cut grass, or even if they're doing it on overtime, why? When that's not their work. It is in their contract, and it was in their contract since the days of schools that had no grass. How much grass was there at the Cofflin School? How much grass was there at the Dubuque? Not lots of grass. So, the custodian went out there. Most of them with hand mowers. Very few of them had riders. And they would cut that in an hour, an hour and a half, once a week. That's not what we have today. We have mega schools that have landscaping, that we've let deteriorate to a point that you don't even know what was there. And all we can go by is pictures.
I, I agree with you that we need to do a better job of maintaining our schools. In order for me to, to be able to agree to that and support that, to the, to the amount that you're asking, all I've asked for is what the people do that are currently doing the job on a weekly basis, so we can know what it is. They have to have a schedule. They just have to do it.
But it would be after the fact. So, you'd get a schedule from the week that just passed, because predicting schedules in this district with the amount of people we have is very difficult. So, we know what we wanna get done in the week. One rainy day, that stops that process, and now everything gets compounded and pushed down the fact.
Yeah, all I'm looking for is any information that would help make a decision, because I wanna make sure that all of our departments are lean, doing what they need to do, and working a full forty-hour week to do that. That's all I wanna do. That's all I'm checking on. I think that's all that the superintendent would want, or anybody that runs an organization, a business or anything. You wanna make sure that you're getting a full week's work out of your people and making sure we're doing things intelligently, with how we schedule it. That's all I'm asking. And I don't think it's that big a deal to ask. I don't know when this contract would go into effect, because we don't have the contract. So, is it gonna go into effect tomorrow morning?
I would like this contract to go into effect tomorrow morning, absolutely.
And then, they're gonna just...
They'll show up. They'll talk to me, find up, we'll wind up a schedule, and we'll get started.
And we don't have a contract yet?
No.
Currently, but we're gonna vote on this today as a contract, but we don't have a contract yet.
This is the contract that's in front of you. It's not signed. There is no promise to a signature. There's no nothing. This is the contract.
It just doesn't say when, the time. When I was, it was almost hinted that this was like a generic document of what they do. It doesn't necessarily, the contract for us...
Well, I would think that most of their contracts would, because I think that the work that they do at universities, at the colleges, at private businesses, is what you see and hear. All of the pictures, all of that detail of the edging, the cutting, the pruning, the, I don't remember the last time...
And you think it's, and you think at twenty-one thousand is a good deal? Have you done an analysis of what that means, hours and whatever, to make sure that it's a good deal?
Well, I think when eight people show up with two or three truckloads of equipment and spend a day trying to pound it out, I think that's...
But I'm saying, when you add all that up, you, you've done that analysis to say that you think that's...
I'm in the process of doing it now.
But we're voting on it today, to go into effect tomorrow.
We're voting on Durfee High School. We're not voting on the district. That's all I'm voting for, is Durfee High School. I don't have the ability to do Durfee High School right now with four people.
That's what I'm talking about. The Durfee High School contract, this twenty thousand a month. You've done the analysis, is what I'm asking, to say that we're gonna get twenty-one thousand dollars worth of service out of this company, like, X amount prevailing wage. We're gonna have X amount of hours for this. Like, you've done that analysis.
The prevailing wage is worth about sixty-five thousand dollars for that project. Of that dollar amount, about sixty-five thousand, prevailing wage. So, just, just as a number, so you understand what public procurement is. Sixty-five thousand is prevailing wage.
And how many hours would that be? That's my point. That's all I was asking.
Eight people, eight hours a day, couple of days a week.
I'm not looking for it right here on the spot. What I'm suggesting is that that would have helped to make this determination for me. With that, I yield.
Anything further, Ms. Pereira?
So, in your experience, is this the first time you've hired landscapers, Mr. Pacico?
This is the first time I'm trying to hire a landscaper to, to do the finish work. We've hired, and I've been involved in seven construction projects. We've had a landscaper in every single one of them.
So, what I'm basing...
And we have never had this kind of...
Of work?
Of work, but also, we have never had this kind of two-year opportunity to see what it looks like. It's all been out the door after the first year. You get one year of a growing period, all of that stuff. The warranty is there. Two years down the road, you got trees dying. There's no more warranty.
I think what, Mr. Pac, I think what, Mr. Pacico, I think what Mr. Agia is getting at is, is this a reasonable price that they're charging us?
It's absolutely a reasonable price.
So, we're not spending...
It's, it's one of the lowest prices on state contract. In order to get on state contract, it's a bid. So, the Commonwealth does work for all the communities, so that they don't get bogged down in procurement.
And I don't disagree that maybe it should have, but, went out to bid to other, but if we're in a situation that we need it now, then we need it now, so let's just do it now, I think. Right? We already have a motion in a second?
Yes.
I'm done.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Agia, the next hold with Mr. Guilfoyle?
Yeah, if I could just get an explanation of what that is.
Yes, that's, Guilfoyle is a public relations company. They do a lot of work with school districts, a lot of professional development. Just last, about two months ago, we sent some administrators to Taunton, that they were using them to do some training. I done some work in meeting with them. We got some good feedback. I would like to bring them on in August for our Admin Institute. They will break up the day into two four-hour sessions. One on training all of our administrators on crisis management, and the other four-hour session will be on conducting investigations. And additionally, that's for the full day, and we also, the membership involves a bank of on-demand trainings that we could have access to for throughout the year. You know, courses such as social media use, filing fifty-one As, bullying. So, these are trainings that we would have on demand that we could be using. We need to have some consistent trainings where our goal is to have everybody trained the same way. And the Admin Institute in August is a good way. Everybody will be there, and everybody will receive the same training.
When it says investigations, are we talking harassment or anything like that?
Yeah, it, it will, it will run the gamut.
So, one question I've always asked, and maybe you know it now, but I would ask it again. When is an investiga, somebody files a complaint, when is the investigation over and how did the person get notified? Is that something that's like, we need this training for, or...
Well, I, I think that that probably will be included in that, but typically, when an investigation is conducted by our HR department, or they should be receiving in written form that what the outcome of that investigation is.
Right, so, I just put that food for thought. I think it's something that we, we clearly need someone to be supporting it. Thank you, I yield.
Any further discussion, Mr. Guilfoyle? Ms. Roderick?
When you say crisis management, what is that going to entail?
That, that will include crises that occur in schools throughout the year, throughout the day. So, some of it could be in regards to threats, working with our administrators, or when to do a lockdown as opposed to a shelter-in-place, all, and everything in between.
I was thinking like CPI-type of crisis management versus, like, that physical crisis management. So, I just wanted clarification. That I yield.
Anything further? Can I get a motion on a second on Mr. Guilfoyle?
Motion approved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number eleven, approval of grants. We have one grant tonight. It's a Title III grant for immigrant children and youth. Any discussion on that grant?
Motion approved.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Committee of the whole, twelve-point-one is a discussion and vote to approve the proposed fiscal year 2024 annual operating budget of the four public schools as presented by Maria Ponce, Superintendent of Schools. Ms. Ponce?
Mr. Chairman, Chairman of Mayor, address the committee prior to the...
Sure, Mr. Assad.
With respect to the twelve-point-one, which is a discussion and vote to approve the fiscal 2024 annual operating budget, I'd like to discuss this with the committee and just address the committee for a couple of minutes. I'd like to recommend that prior to voting on the annual operating budget, that we first review, discuss, and vote on specific, a couple of specific items in the budget. The reason is that certain members of the committee have family members who are employed by the school district and contribute to line items in the proposed annual budget. This is a very common occurrence throughout the state, and it has been for many, many, many years. Fortunately, the Ethics Commission has instituted some common sense and well-established state protocols to address this, so that the majority, if not all, of the members who are elected and vote on the budget will be able to participate and vote. In the instant case that we have for the four of a school apartment, there are two individuals who are members of the school department, school committee that do have conflicts on a couple of the specific items. One is Chairman Paul Coogan, whose brother, Tom, Thomas Coogan, is employed by the school apartment, and Committeewoman and Vice Chair Mimi Larrabee's brothers, Matt Damaris and Michael Larrabee, are employed by the school apartment. Under the law, if an immediate family member of a public official has a financial interest in a particular matter, such as an approval of the budget, the public official must abstain from participating or voting on this matter. However, in accordance with the Ethics Commission of the law, the public official may vote on any other line item in the budget that do not affect the financial interest of a family member, in other words, eliminating any potential conflict of interest. In addition, the public official can vote on the entire budget, the bottom-line budget, including salaries, once the committee or board follow a certain procedure that's been established, once again, by the Ethics Commission. And they've done this... And they've done this because of the fact that this is a very common occurrence. When you have, especially at the school committee, hundreds and thousands of people that are working in the school department, many times what happens is there's a conflict. And the one thing that, that the Ethics Commission and what we all should be trying to do is to make sure that the, as many people participate in the discussion and vote on the, such an important matter as the budget for the school department. The procedure that's followed and laid out by the Ethics Commission is that, number one, the school committee identifies the budget line item that includes the family member's salary and votes on it separately. The line item procedure also includes the direct supervisor of that individual, thereby eliminating any potential conflict of interest on a particular vote. The individual family member, whose, family member is a member of the committee, obviously abstains from such a vote. Once that is done, all conflicts are dealt with through the line item procedure. The committee, the school committee, may then vote on the budget as a whole. And at that point in time, even the individuals, and this is pursuant to the Ethics Commission, the individuals who have conflicts on certain members of their family being employees of the department are also allowed to vote. In compliance with the rules, regulations, and opinions of the Ethics Commission, it's recommended that with respect to Chairman Coogan, the following line items be addressed by the school committee prior to a discussion and vote with respect to the entire annual budget for 2024. And that would be with respect to Tom Coogan, charged, whose line item is charged to the Human Resources professional salaries. And also to Maria Ponce, because Maria Ponce is his immediate direct supervisor. So thereby eliminating any potential conflict, because Chairman Coogan would not be voting on this particular matter. This would be done by the individuals on this committee that have absolutely no conflict of interest to vote up or down or just to table it. The second is with respect to Vice Chair Mimi Larve. And the following line items would be something that should be voted on and discussed prior to Ms. Larve voting on the budget, and she would have to abstain. One would be with respect to the brother Matt Damaris, who is charged, whose salary is charged to the Durfee Administration professional salaries, as well as to Michael Larve, who's charged to line twenty-seven seventeen one thousand custodial salaries, which is part of the, the union contract for the custodians, and it's over five million dollars in that particular line item. In addition to which, also would be a vote with respect to Maria Borges, because Ms. Borges happens to be the direct supervisor of Michael Larve. What this does, this procedure does, if followed by the committee, is to, number one, eliminate any conflict of interest. And it also allows the officers who have been elected by the citizens of Fall River to be able to participate in voting with respect to the annual budget for the Fall River School Committee. I would secondly recommend that since the chair and the vice chair have conflicts on specific items, if the committee is, is, follows the recommendation, that perhaps the, the former chairperson, Mr. Hart, would be able to chair that end of it. Because in the way that the Ethics Commission has established it, it's a very limited situation where they have to abstain. Chair Coogan could vote with respect to any issue in the budget, including any conflict that Ms. Larve has, and vice versa. So that would be my recommendation, number one, to have Mr. Hart as the vice chair, former vice chair, to basically have the gavel with respect to this particular matter. And also have the individuals abstain from voting on their personal matters with family members. And that this would allow everyone on, on this dais to be able to vote on the ultimate budget. And that would be my recommendation to the committee.
Question?
Mr. Agia?
Just, that's a lot to be said all at once, but do we have this in writing? When did we find out that this was an issue?
Well, this was an issue last year too.
Yeah.
So that, and basically, we, I think the committee last year voted not to, to do the specific line items. However, this is something that the, the Ethics Commission has put out in terms of their advisories so that elected officials will be able to participate and vote on, on an ultimate contract, on ultimate budget.
So Mike, the reason why I'm asking that is, in the document that we have here, none of what you just said, Attorney Assad, is even listed in our budget presentation. So as you were talking, I'm thinking to myself like, what are we gonna vote on? What, like, is this for real? So we don't even have in writing what you just said, which we knew last year was an issue, to prepare for this year. So now, as we go forward, we're gonna take, well, don't vote on that line item, can't vote on this line item. Well, that one is, I don't think it's a good look. I, I don't.
Are you, are you finished?
I'm just, I'm just wondering why we didn't get anything.
Are you finished?
Why would we not get something with the agenda, is the question?
It's not part of the agenda. This is my recommendation to the committee as your attorney.
So you never talked to Superintendent, the Vice Chair or the Chair about this? They're in the meeting to talk about the agenda. This subject didn't come up when you're planning this meeting?
The, actually, the subject matter came up, I believe it was today. In terms of my recommendation to the committee would be, and I, I actually prepared it today. That's not, and also, you know something? This is not a complicated issue. This is not something that you would need sixteen days to, to review or even one day to review. All this does is, number one, eliminate any conflict that any member would have in terms of a vote and allowing elected members, members of this committee to be able to vote on a full contract. You could vote yes, you could vote no to that. It's up to you. But the bottom line is, it's, it's pretty clear. If in fact you'd follow a very simple procedure, which is voting on a couple of matters ahead of time, the chair and the vice chair of this committee will be able to vote on the, on the budget. If the committee elects not to do so, then the chair and the vice chair will not be allowed to vote on the bottom line of this annual budget. Very clear, very, very easy to understand. You don't need a lot of preparation. You certainly don't need it in writing.
So when you look at this, I don't mean to offend you, sir, but.
You're not offending me, but it's, it's, I just want to make sure everybody understands how clear this particular issue is.
And, and I'm just trying to be clear on what the roles are. So when we look at a budget, we're gonna have this budget presented to us today with a one-pager to describe what it is. So if what you're saying is accurate, all I'm asking for is on the document that comes from Mrs. Ponce that says, I'm recommending a vote of ten million dollars, blah, blah, blah. It should say, for the following three, four, or five line items, for the following reasons, I make a motion, we need to make a motion that this is for. That's all I'm asking. There's nothing listed here. So then we come to the meeting and then, I don't know what, however, what you just said. So all I'm asking for is, I think it would be much cleaner. The budget's gonna pass, in my opinion, anyway. Last year, we made it easy. They just stepped out if they had a conflict. But that's not even here to know what the options are. So that's all I'm saying is, we got a one-pager. It doesn't mention anything about this. So I guess we'll go forward and, you know, talk about the budget, then vote on these only line items, but just proceed. I just don't understand why it wouldn't come in ahead of time. I yield.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first motion is to approve the salary line item, two-eight-four-eight-four-zero-zero-five-dash-five-one-one-two-zero-zero, charged to Human Resources professional salaries in the, in the amount of one-hundred-twenty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-six for Thomas Coogan. Need a second?
Second.
Roll call, Deborah?
Question?
Go ahead.
Can I ask what you're reading from?
A prepared sheet.
Where's that prepared from?
From Mr. Assad.
When did you get it?
What's that?
When did you receive it, if I might ask?
Tonight.
Does anybody else have that?
I'm, I think I'm the only one speaking on it, so I don't think anyone else.
Well, we're voting on it, so that, I'm just saying you're making, I'm make, that's making the point that there's no reason why that document wouldn't have been here so that we could all know exactly what it is. That's the only point that I'm making. With that, I yield.
My guess, excuse me, my guess is that Attorney Assad made his recommendation today. Part of the recommendation was to have Mr. Hart, Vice Chair, which I'm not sure why, because Mimi's here and then the mayor's coming back, but whatever. I could care less who has the gavel. Nobody ever uses it. But, so I'm assuming that's why he prepared that ahead of time.
Correct.
This back and forth for no reason. Please, let's just have a meeting. I would really appreciate it.
I need a second. I need a second.
Oh, Shelley's seconded it.
Sorry. Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Second motion is to approve the salary line item of two-eight-four-eight-four-zero-zero-dash-five-one-one-two-zero-zero, charged to Superintendent Professional salaries in the amount of two-hundred-twenty-thousand-three-hundred for Maria Ponce. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Deborah?
Question?
Mr. Agia?
I'm just trying to follow. Now, this is the superintendent's contract, and Ms. Larve can't participate because of what reason?
Reason, the reason, I can address that.
Yeah, that's all.
The reason is, is that with respect to Matt Damaris, who is the brother of Ms. Larve's, her brother.
I understand. I just asked him to clarify. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Next motion is to approve the salary line item of two-zero-one-five-eight-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-one-one-two-hundred, charged to Durfee Administration professional salaries in the amount of one-hundred-fifty-four-thousand-five-hundred for Matt Damaris. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Next motion is to approve the salary line item of two-eight-four-eight-dash-four-zero-zero-five-one-one-two-hundred, charged to Superintendent Professional salaries in the amount of two-hundred-twenty-thousand-three-hundred dollars for Maria Ponce. Is there a second?
Didn't we just vote for that?
That was for the mail.
Did it go to?
No.
I saw it. It was there twice. My fault. I apologize. Next motion is to approve line item two-seven-one-seven-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-one-one-two-four-zero, charged to custodial salaries with aggregate salaries for all employees in that line item totaling five million ninety-two-thousand-three-hundred-sixty in line item two-seven-one-seven-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-one-nine-three-zero-zero, charged to custodial uniform allowances with the aggregate salaries for all employees in that line item totaling ninety thousand dollars for Michael Larve. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Question?
Question, Mr. Agia?
You knew it was saying the beginning of that. Was that like the whole custodial line?
Yes.
So any person that works in custodial?
Yes.
And that was just for this, or that's for stuff that already happened? Would this legal opinion go for, pass stuff as well? If whoever you're saying can't participate based on the entire custodian piece, then they obviously can't vote on anything related to any people in the custodian line forever, as long as the brother's still working.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, the, when the issue comes up, I'll address it, look at it, and see if in fact an individual would be able to vote or not. But just because of, on this particular one item here.
I was just thinking in the past, that's all. So if they're saying that now, and two months ago, we voted for something for a custodian supervisor, technically that shouldn't have happened either. That's if what you're saying now is true. With that, I yield.
Roll call?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
And the final motion to approve line item two-seven-one-seven-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-one-one-two-four-zero, charged to custodial salaries with aggregate salaries for all employees in that line item totaling five million ninety-two-thousand-three-hundred-sixty for Maria Borges. Is there a second?
Second.
That's not the same one, five million something?
Yeah, same figure, same figure. Same, came out of the same line item.
Got it. Roll call?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Okay, that's it for these motions.
Just, can I ask a question, Bruce?
Sure.
Just for clarification. So, and I could be wrong, but I was on the assumption the reason, you know, they had to step out was because we were voting on something that had to do with financial issues, so it had to do with salary. If we were voting on like a piece of equipment or something like that, that wouldn't make a difference. But with that being said, you did pull Maria Borges out because she was a supervisor, you said?
Right.
Of Mike. So would that then apply for the hiring of supervisors? Is that something you could look into for us?
Yes, we will.
Just so we don't, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's always, it's always the individual plus on a vote, on a vote for, for the, the budget. It would also be the direct supervisor.
Okay. Thank you.
Question?
Mr. Agia?
Along with that same logic, I do believe that I didn't hear, but maybe I missed it, that we also should be voting on Joe Correa, who's the boss of custodians, and Ken Pacheco, who's the boss of those bosses.
Mr. Assad?
In terms of the budget?
Yeah, they all get paid. So if the logic is that we, based on the custodian having worked there, that we can't have Angel Borges vote, then therefore, that same logic should say that Joe Correa, who's Angel Boss, Angel Borges' boss, and Ken Pacheco, who's the ultimate boss.
No, 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 no. The, this is, this is strictly with respect to Michael Larve and who his direct supervisor is. And that his direct supervisor is Maria Borges, and that's the only reason why her name was there. Only reason.
So he never reports to Joe Correa?
There's nothing on that. There's, this, this has nothing to do with Mr. Correa. Mr. Correa is, is not a relative of anyone voting on this particular panel.
But the boss, I don't, I thought you had mentioned about a boss. That's why I was saying.
No, no, direct supervisor of the individual who is a family member of someone on this board.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, back to the budget, twelve point one. Superintendent?
Okay, so since the March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, when Mr. Almeida and I presented the initial proposed budget to this committee, and as a result of feedback received, we've made some several adjustments to the original presentation. Although the bottom line was not impacted because we moved some funds around to account for the changes, there are some changes that are the result of, of the hearings as well as feedback that we received at meetings here. So additional, we are proposing an additional vice principal for Henry Lord Community School. Henry Lord has the highest student enrollment, and we are making it a comparable model to the middle schools also. We are also proposing an additional special education administrator to support Assistant Superintendent Obenchain. And Durfee High School has requested two additional positions, an art position and the CTE for early childhood. These are due to course over enrollments. And as you know, at the last meeting, we adjusted the circuit break of funds. And the difference there, we added one special education supervisor proposed, two speech language pathologists, one evaluation team chair, and one special education clerk. Those are changes that were made and are not reflected in the original budget that we proposed. As a result, I am recommending the approval of the FI twenty-four annual budget for the Fall River Public Schools totaling one-hundred-and-sixty-three-million-nine-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-seven dollars.
Motion approved with a question?
Mr. Agia?
Motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second after.
I got some discussion points myself. Go ahead. Mr. Agia, please.
Just, on the.
Motion and a second.
The, they said move money around, and then I think I'm seeing it's from the security maintenance. Do you have a little more detail on what that is?
We had set aside funds in the building rentals and leases account in the budget. And we were able to shift some of those funds to cover these positions that we're asking for.
And then we don't need this, we don't need those storage facilities or?
It is, it, we're okay with doing that. And I, I'm very, I'm being very broad because of other discussions we have tonight.
All right, just, I'm not sure what that means, but the rationale is minus three seventy-four in security and maintenance. So there had to been line items in the proposed budget that were reduced by that amount.
We are looking at, we are looking at an additional site to, to lease and potentially purchase. And we set aside funds in the budget to. And we set aside funds in the budget to be able to pay it off, potentially pay it off in a shorter period of time.
Okay, I, I, I get it. I, I don't, I think you know what you're doing. I think superintendent knows what they're doing. It just, it begged the question, basically. So I'm sure afterwards we'll know more about it. My question on the overall budget is, I had looked at, I kept quoting the groundskeeper, just because that's one that I kept on quoting, at fifty-nine thousand. When I went back to look at the contract, I don't think that they make fifty-nine thousand. Is each line like higher than what the real salary is across the whole budget?
So it's based, so the salary is based on whatever the percentage increase is for next year. So at this point, the salaries have been adjusted. In some cases, it potentially is different with some contracts that were not negotiated prior to the budget being developed. So.
But to your knowledge, it's the, it's not every one that's over?
No.
There's just what you know at the time and then it's going to be real money. So when I'm, when I quoted fifty-nine thousand from the budget, I'm not way off.
No.
Or seventy-two for whatever.
Correct.
It's pretty much what it is.
Yes, it is.
I, I just think that some of the stuff that's in here is very good suggestions that superintendent took, things that I a hundred percent support, and I look forward to working with you guys in the future. With that, I yield.
Ms. Larrabee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question for Ms. Obuchan. Hi, it's just regarding the request that was added into the, the budget. Last meeting, you came in front of us and I believe the question was asked, maybe they recommended that you, you get another administrator, somebody to help you, and you stated, no, not at this time. And I respected that because you are fairly new, right? You haven't had your feet wet for too long. And I appreciated that transparency saying, I'm just going to hold off and I'll come to you when it's necessary. So what I'm asking you is why the three, the three-week change?
Sure.
Okay?
So, yeah, so I think the recommendation came a couple times to me, right? So initially, when I'm before this committee, I hadn't really thought about it and prepared a reasonable response. Since then, since our last meeting on the twentieth of March or whatever, when we met about this, I've had several conversations with my own leadership team and done some serious reflecting on what this district needs to be able to support the students and the staff. Special education has two huge components to it. One is compliance and the other is service delivery. And until you're in the trenches with the compliance piece, you can't even imagine how big the lift is. So in talking to my leadership team on why special education has fallen behind in the service delivery piece, they feel very strongly, and I have made the same observation, that it's because we are spending hours and hours on compliance issues. What is compliance with the, with the DESI? It is paperwork. It is keeping them out of buildings. It is keeping them in offices. Just since January alone, we have had to prepare our TFM self-assessment for the Department of Education, which stands for tiered focus monitoring. That has probably taken me personally at least twenty hours outside of my time to even compile the information, not to mention all the time that I spend with the team doing it here. We have thirty-five PRS complaints this year, so far. The next closest district to us is New Bedford at thirty-four. Brockton, twenty-three. Framingham, twenty-something. If we don't get our compliance in check, we are going to, again, be spending more money on compensatory services. We're going to spend more money on going to hearings and being, having to spend more money on attorney fees. That takes my special education supervisors away from the work that needs to be done. We met with our programming, special education programming task force, and they talk about the professional development that's needed for special education staff. If I don't have supervisors in buildings, how can I do that? If I don't have someone who can build, so for example, when Pace enrolls a student, I get emails two and three times about the same student. Where is this student going to be placed? When can they start? The parent has called a few times. I don't want students to have to wait. But again, when you spread supervisors too thin, because they're the ones that have to review the IEP, there's the ones that have to say they can go to inclusion in their neighborhood school or not. They have to go to a substantially separate program in another school. Again, these are all the tasks that when I step back and I reflect are things that prevent the work in the buildings. That's just a few things, right? We have a DOJ investigation pending. Our attorney has incurred, has informed us that it's going to be a big lift when this report comes back. I'm one person, so I pull my team, who is fantastic and doing whatever they need to do, but that's at the expense of being in buildings with students and staff.
Right, and I absolutely agree with everything you're saying. I see, compliance is huge right now, especially the circumstances we put ourselves in, right? But I think my question was, that happens quick, right? You went from, no, not yet, to, oh, yes, this is exactly what I need. I think what I'm, what I'm saying is, do you need a little more time to, to come to the terms? Is it an administrator or a leadership role that you mentioned three times, or is it something else? You know, you, you just made the decision quick after coming in front of us saying, no, that's not what I need right now.
And that was partly due because it was kind of brought up in this forum without me any time to reflect on it, right? So then it was brought up in this forum, but since that time, whether it's three weeks, six weeks, the data doesn't lie, right? The data is there. So I needed to take the time to be able to reflect on it. It doesn't mean it wasn't there three weeks ago, right? It's just that I hadn't thought about it with all the other things I'm doing in Fall River. To come up here and confidently ask for something, but now I can confidently ask. And it's budget season. Now is the time. I'm not trying to do things later on and appear non-transparent. Being intransparent, this need was there three weeks ago. I needed the time to be able to pull all this data, talk with my team, think about it, and think about what makes sense. That's why it's not, there's not a job description that's ready to come before you. This is just the need and where we're going to go, if it's approved by the committee, and that's really why.
Right, I, I don't see right now what we can approve. Am I mistaken, Ms. Superintendent? Because there's no job description.
Right, right.
So I'm not really sure what we're supposed to.
Well, it's in the budget. It's embedded in the budget as an addition, just like all these positions. So you would be approving the budget, and this is a budgeted position.
Okay. I yield for now.
Anything further? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, so I one hundred percent support what you're bringing forward here. I've sat in meetings after meetings for years as the chairman of the special ed subcommittee, and we continually go round and around and a lot of things the same way, and nothing changes. So when you were hired for this job, one of the things that I asked you to do as one member of the committee was be bold and do what you need to do to turn this department around. And I can honestly say that you've done that with every single thing I've ever heard you say. Your honesty in this was, it's about optics. And I think it's time for all of us, from the superintendent on down that work in this district, to stop worrying so much about optics and get down to the reality of what you're facing. So you were facing this a long time ago. As soon as you got the job, it didn't take you long to figure out, wow, this is a big job with a lot of responsibilities and things need to really be changed around a lot. So I appreciate you being honest about that. The first sentence in your document that you clearly laid out for us in our thing was, "As I consider the recommendation to add an additional leadership role to my team, I struggle to move past optics and instead focus on benefits to kids in the district." To me, that says it all. So I appreciate what you said. I applaud the superintendent and I've been pushing on her end for, for similar things. Don't worry about the optics of, well, I can't take the position because it's going to look like I'm, you know, padding my budget or superintendent's budget. We have a lot of problems here that need to be addressed in a lot of departments. And that takes administrators, that takes assistant administrators, and that takes everybody to be working towards the same thing. So I firmly think this is important. The positions about the, you added a team chair, you added a few other positions. You need more of those too. If you were being honest about what we really need, you'd be coming for more. And I told you we're going to have a subcommittee meeting, which we will, and I, I'd ask you, come forward with what you need to make a difference to the kids here. Don't let optics get in the way. Look at the benefits to the kids and to the, and to the system. So with that, I yield, and I do appreciate your work. One last thing.
I, I got it. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Pereira.
So if we don't have a job description, what does the job entail?
So if I just think about the tasks, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that we need to do a lot of professional development on compliance for administrators, for staff. So it would be, one piece would be professional development on specifically related to compliance. Like I said before, someone who can work directly with Pace to enroll our new students and make sure that they're getting into schools and into classrooms more quickly than they are currently.
Who's doing that now?
Our supervisors do.
Okay.
But I have, you know, six different people doing six different things, so. The other thing is, we have interruptions of service letters that we are required to send out, again, another compliance issue, and compensatory letters that need to go out when a teacher is a vacancy for a teacher, which we've had a lot in Fall River, right?
Yeah.
That, the letter is supposed to go out within a certain timeline. Again, I need someone to oversee to make sure those letters are going out, to make sure we have an idea. I think we have a hundred students that need speech and language compensatory services this summer alone. I need someone to be able to oversee that to make sure, again, the students are getting what they deserve. The PRS complaints. A PRS complaint, an easy PRS complaint, will take a supervisor at least four hours to do. A lengthy one is an eight-hour task, and that's eight hours on top of everything else they have to do, right? So handling all our PRS complaints, because the other thing about streamlining that, it's also looking for trends. Why do we have so many? Is it, you know what I mean? Is it IEP timelines? Is it not certified staff providing services? Whatever it is. Oh, I'm sorry. I need someone to condense that information to give it to me. The, we are going to be losing a very valuable clerk, who is going to be retiring in January, who does a ton of circuit breaker information for us with Kevin's team, and I need someone to be able to, again, oversee that circuit breaker so that I can work with the whole department on making sure the services, the compliance, everything, the training that's needed for staff, everything is aligned to move this district forward. When I started here, you guys wanted, you said bold, and I remember the mayor telling me to watch Braveheart, right? I mean, waiting to do these, to make these changes does not benefit anyone, except like Mr. Agiar said, is I felt like it was optics. Because the complaints were there before I got here, they're going to continue to be the same, and it's not because people are working hard. They are working very hard, but I don't want to lose good people because we're just spreading them too thin for too long. So I think the two go hand in hand. The supervisor increases to get into the buildings with staff, with students and staff, and taking their caseloads down to something more manageable than seven hundred, six hundred, and having some person to really oversee this compliance piece so that I know the trends and I can put process and procedures.
So it's almost like a compliance officer, working out of, in a sense, if that's going to be their main.
And then like, you know, we're developing process and procedures throughout the department, so someone to help me, again, oversee those. You know, being one person, I can't oversee them all myself.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I have a couple of questions. How, how big is your administrative team right now?
So right now, I have four supervisors that are like full-time. The Durfee supervisor is a department head, doesn't, she, she's awesome, but she's at Durfee, right? So she does the special education piece up there, but not the other stuff in other buildings like the other supervisors do. So it's really a point five, right? So four point five. And then, you know, Mr. Ms. Farias with early childhood, but that's its own animal, so she's really just overseeing that. So realistically, it's, you know, four and a half for the entire district of special education programming and oversight.
And, and down below, we're going to add to make it five and a half?
I'm sorry?
The special ed supervisor we're adding makes it five and a half?
No, you had already approved two, so we added the third one. I had asked for, three brings their caseloads down to around four hundred. We are up to thirty, three thousand one hundred and thirty-five special education students last time I was in Power School. So that's gone up. Last year, I think it was somewhere around twenty-seven hundred, something like that. So this, with the additional three supervisors, it brings the caseload, again, because Durfee supervisor just stays at Durfee, and Ms. Farias supports early childhood. So the remaining supervisors, their caseloads will be around four hundred.
No, I, I'm lost. So you have, you're adding one also tonight. We adjusted the circuit breaker funds to add another special ed supervisor.
Yes.
That's going to take your number to what?
That's going to take me to seven.
Seven, okay.
Because you, the first part of the budget had two in them, so two additional.
I think Boston has eight.
You think Boston also probably has other layers.
Different layers, yeah.
Yeah, different, like I'm sure Boston has multiple compliance officers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to support this at all because I don't, I do want to see a job description for this. I want to see if there's any overlap. Matter of fact, I would make a motion to table this item to the next meeting and you bring us a job description so we know where we're going. I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it. I just don't want to see the same thing on three or four job descriptions. That's, that's what I think the big gap is here. You know, I know Mr. Agiar was angry at the last one because he didn't get a one-pager. I'd like to see a one-pager on that job because I think that's a big job and it's a very, very important job. I can't diminish it a bit, but I do think we should have something in writing on what that job is also. I know, I know that's what Mr. Agiar supports in most cases.
Yeah, we have it. We have the one pager here.
Where's the job description? Is it there?
We don't have it, but the.
But that's what I want to see.
Okay, just stay consistent on your vote.
I am. I'm staying consistent, yeah. Relax, you know what?
Once you make a motion to table and it's seconded, sir.
I seconded it.
Does rules apply for everybody?
All right.
The rules apply to everybody, yourself included.
I appreciate you.
You made a motion, the gentleman seconded it, so therefore as chairman, you take a roll call. That's all.
Thank you.
Follow the same rules for yourself as you tell everybody else.
Thank you for helping me, Mr. Agia. I know that's your concern. I appreciate your help. Go ahead, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
No.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. All right, so we'll wait, wait on that one. Anything further on the?
Can I ask a question? Because everybody tables things so quick before. I voted yes to table it because, like I have when other people have asked if somebody, one of my colleagues needs more information, that's fine. I didn't particularly think I needed any more, but that's fine. But this isn't going to prevent like a hiring. If we, if we come back, she comes back with a job description, she gives us a job description, we can get this going, so she's got something to work with pretty soon because I'd hate to table it and have her get into the school year and not be able to.
Next meeting.
Okay, well, it was, it was part of the budget, though.
Right, but we'll leave. Because I do want to fill it. I just want to see a job description.
That's, that's basically what I'm asking. Are we going to be able to fill this position even though we're voting on the budget today? If we get a job description and we all are happy with our answers, can we fill a position?
How do we do that, Kev?
No, because we didn't put it in the budget. It's not in the budget.
How do we do that?
Honestly, we can just leave the budget as is and kind of just place a hold on that dollar amount.
That position, okay.
For that position, and.
Go forward.
When you approve the job description next month, then we can move forward with and hire for somebody.
Thank you.
Question?
Mr. Agia?
So wouldn't that be the same thing of what we just asked for that was tabled? All we were asking for by this, or what the superintendent was asking for, was to have an amount of money put as a placeholder until we get the job description. That's basically what we were just asking for.
Correct.
So you're saying now to just do the same thing that was just tabled and, you know, basically you're saying it's not going to affect the budget, which I agree with you.
No, it's not.
We weren't asking for, to fill the job because there's no job description. My question to the superintendent, to the chair, to the vice chair, who sits and goes over the agenda. When this item came up at the agenda, because it's on the agenda, so obviously there must have been a discussion. Does somebody on, that's in that meeting, want to share what the discussion was about the need? Was anybody at that table, tell the superintendent to tell Ms. Obenchain, come to us Monday with a job description, because she could have done that? I don't think anybody told her. Can anybody counteract that? What was said at the, at the meeting?
I, I, I'll speak for myself.
Sure.
Ms. Obenchain and I have had this discussion. We actually were going back and forth about bringing the job description at the same time, but we felt that the, the job needed to be, the position needed to be approved first, and then we needed to go back and make sure that it was specific to that job. So that piece, that. that it was specific to that job. So that piece, that we, we talked about whether we bring it at the same time, but we thought it was presumptuous to bring a description to a job, a position that has not even been approved.
When you say "we", you mean the mayor and...
Ms. Obenchain and I have had this discussion.
My question is, and I think this is getting to the bigger issue here. Wednesdays come, we get an email to say, "The mayor, the vice chair, Attorney Assad, and the superintendent talk about what's gonna go on the agenda for the next week." That's a meeting that's supposed to happen. My question is, at that meeting, when this petition came up, did the mayor tell you, Madam Superintendent, "I'm not gonna vote for this unless there's a job description"? Yes or no?
No, he did not.
Mr. Aguirre, this is the 12th. I didn't get this paper. This was right, you're, you're...
The position is in the budget.
No, the agenda, no, the agenda is the 12th, the description.
Correct.
I didn't, that was, that was after we did the agenda. I didn't see this.
You approved the agendas.
I did, I said this paper.
The backup.
The backup paper.
Right. But you approved it on the agenda.
This wasn't, I didn't have that the 12th, or that the 12th.
We talked about...
We talked about the job, and I said, "I wanna see what it is." But I didn't have any backup information that day.
But did you say to the superintendent in the meeting, "Do not put this unless you have the agenda, unless you have a job description"?
No, what we said is, is, "Are you sure she wants to go forward with this?" And she said she was gonna get back to us, which I said, "Fine, let's see what we got." But we didn't get a job description, and that's all it is. I have no idea. These, these papers are dated the 12th. I wanna say we met the 10th. Am I right?
The eighth.
The eighth.
But when you meet, don't you go over the budget?
I don't go over line by line.
Don't you go over the agenda items?
Not line by line. Oh, no, this is in the budget. Yeah, we go over the agenda.
Right, so the superintendent...
But I have the agenda we went over. It doesn't have that on it.
But when you...
The position was on it.
But when you sat with the superintendent to talk about her presentation for the budget, which is on here, that's what we're talking about. This subject never came up, is my point.
It did. May I?
Yeah.
It, it did, Mr. Aguirre. And what the conclusion was, was the superintendent was supposed to, our recommendation was to go back to Ms. Obachan, see if this is something she really wants to move forward with in such a quick time, right? It was three, my, my concern was, it was three weeks, okay? Go back to Ms. Obachan. It was supposedly taken, gonna be taken out, and then she would be getting back to us, the superintendent.
I did. And then I did call the mayor and told him that we were including it.
But when did you or anybody say, "Just get the job description"?
No one did.
That's my point.
Yeah.
Okay. Nobody did, Mr. Aguirre.
I mean, otherwise, we would have had the thing done. She would have had the thing done. The superintendent would have had the job description done. But this is a budget discussion, not necessarily the positions. So we are traditionally always put, and there's probably other ones in here, that are things in the budget that we don't have a job description for, or we're still working on. But we can approve some, but not approve others. I think it's gonna go through. I appreciate you saying that you're, you're in favor of it. But with that being said, what I would ask is, in your department, can you give us a weekly summary of what your people do, so that we can know and have a, like, you know, some rationale to say, "Why do you need X amount of stuff"? Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Aguirre, I, again, disagree. That's a personnel issue, and that is between, again, Ms. Obachan and the superintendent. If she wants to give that information to the superintendent, if the superintendent wants to share it. But that is not under our purview to, to deal with any of the personnel situation. So I'm just gonna leave it there. I disagree.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah. So every single time I'm gonna ask for something, the superintendent has a right to, whether to give it or not. I happen to know that the superintendent doesn't have a problem with doing this, because it's the right thing to do. It just makes sense for us to justify the positions. If you choose to vote on things without having that justification, that's on you. But I asked the superintendent to, to present some information. It's to try to make an informed decision in the best interest of this district. And many times, I've asked the superintendent for information, that lo and behold, she becomes a better superintendent, the department becomes a little better, and we glean information by the information I ask for. So I don't think there's any offense here. If you choose not to give it, Madam Superintendent, feel free to just send me an email and say, "No, I choose not to give you that information." I happen to think it's very pertinent.
Can you send it to all of us?
Of course.
Madam Superintendent, just asking.
Of course.
I mean, if I can, you know, please don't...
Question was for Ms. Superintendent.
Hold on.
Okay.
Ms. Perera?
Please don't bother sending it to me. Because again, it's the same issue. It's not that I don't wanna make sure what needs to get done, but you just coming here and saying, "We're overwhelmed. These are the caseloads. These are the compliance issues. We need more hands on deck." That's all I need to know. You're the expert, and I'm assuming you're doing a good job making sure people are doing a good job. So you're saying, "Hey, I need more help to navigate this." So I get it. I, it's the same way I feel about the custodians. I'm not a mental health expert. If you told me you had a worker doing, it took her a whole day to do one report, I would think, "What? She take a long lunch?" But I've never done that report, right? So that report that you're telling me takes eight hours is something I don't have experience in. So you giving me a, a day-by-day list of what everybody that works for you does, it, it's, it does nothing for me. So I'm looking at you. You were hired here. You certainly seem to be very effective. We're getting good things done. Everybody has told you that we wanna see big things happen with the Special Education Department. So kudos to you. I think it's gonna be fine. Again, I just wanna shuffle back to, if we table this, are we still gonna be able to add this? I want someone to tell me we're still gonna be able to add this position later.
Yep. Yes.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Any further discussion?
Question, related just to that item. So the only thing that I would say, in, in making that go another month, is that now we get into, when we approve it, it'll be a month later into June. And when you have experience working in schools and hiring and stuff, there's a window of time when you're going to be able to attract people to jobs. And the more we back that up into July, whatever, people have committed to other things for their district. So that's the only caution that I would make, and I would ask the superintendent to weigh in if she feels that's gonna be an issue. But I personally think that that's an issue, because the longer we wait for positions, the worse it's gonna be for the pool. With that, I yield.
Okay.
One more thing?
Sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Larve.
So if we get a job description in the next week or two weeks, if you got, you go hard on this, can we approve this via email, via, is that for you?
No.
No, we cannot.
No, we cannot.
The, we'd have to actually ratify it at the next meeting.
Okay. I yield.
Okay. So, discussion point 12.1 is a vote to approve the budget final number of 163920197. We have a motion and a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.2 is a discussion and vote to approve the proposed fiscal year 2024 transportation budget of the Farver Public Schools, as presented by Maria Potts.
What you have before you is just the transportation projected budget of $10,342,504. I'm recommending that we approve this for FY '24, for transportation only.
Any discussion on the transportation budget? Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, I asked in the past about a legal issue going on with bus vendors.
It's got nothing to do with this vote, Mr. Aguirre. It's got nothing to do with this vote.
Madam Superintendent, so I asked at the last public meeting, I asked via email, I sent it to yourself, I sent it to the mayor, I sent it to the vice chair, related to litigation that people, that a bus vendor had against the city. I received no response from you or the mayor. The mayor at the last public meeting said that was taken care of before the meeting that we had. I sent notice at that night to say it wasn't taken care of. Madam Superintendent, I'm gonna ask you what your response is.
And I, my response will be the same, Mr. Aguirre. This is, the city is working through the litigation. I asked mayor, that, I reminded him that you had sent that email. Said he was going to communicate, and that it was all set. That's what I responded.
The mayor said he was gonna communicate?
That he would communicate. He's...
I didn't get any communication?
No, I told you, Mr. Aguirre, it was all set.
What does that mean?
I know you had people call, yeah, you did.
What does that mean?
That means they're waiting for a couple of signatures. It has been settled.
It was settled before the meeting, that we'd last had a month ago?
Yeah, it was.
Even though, when I sent you an email that night to say it wasn't settled, you didn't respond to it?
I was mis, I was misinformed by the Corporation Council's office. They told me it was settled.
Oh, it was since settled?
No, 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 it was settled when I told you it was settled.
Okay. Here's the bottom line.
It's got nothing to do with this vote, though.
It does. It has, I'm gonna justify whether I vote yes or no, and I told you...
Vote your heart, Mr. Aguirre.
Point blank, I will. I will. And I told you that I think we should settle all the litigation that came from the bus vendors, that we know we owed them money. Mr. Pacico knew it, Mrs. Potts knew it. Everybody knew that we owed them the money. All I simply asked as a member of this committee was for you to say whether we actually, us, the school committee who signs the contract, has a say in it. You keep saying, "No, we don't have any say, we don't have any say, we don't have any say." But when we sign a contract, we have a say in it. And you said it was settled, it wasn't settled. Since then, I believe it has been settled. Something very simple, like a one-paragraph email to the superintendent, or to us to say, "Yes, we finally settled. The agreement was X dollars, and have a nice day."
It was settled when I told you it was settled, Mr. Aguirre.
That is absolute false statement.
Well, I know you were gonna call the bus company that night at the thing we're at, but I had already told you it was settled when you were gonna...
And it was not settled.
When you were gonna call the bus owner.
You can continue to sit here and tell the truth for this committee.
No, I'm not telling you the truth.
Telling you right now, it wasn't settled, and you know it.
It was settled.
I'm gonna vote no. Thank you.
Is it settled now?
It's settled. I don't know if all the papers are signed, it's settled.
I don't know, because the mayor never actually answered the email that I sent.
Do I have a motion and a second?
I only know because I asked the gentleman who was suing us, and he said that they did settle, three weeks later after the meeting. That's all. That's all I'm saying.
Is it settled now?
It's settled. I tried to tell you. Do we have a motion and a second?
I need a motion and a second.
I need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 12.3 is the fiscal year 2024 budget of the Farver Schools to the mayor for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
This is the combination of the two?
Right.
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.4 is a discussion and vote to approve the start and end times for school year 2324, as presented by Maria Potts.
I have a question.
You want her to go first?
No, she can go first.
Superintendent?
Well, what we have before you is the start and end times for next school year, 2324. And there are no changes to our start and end times. They will remain as they were this year.
Discussion, Ms. Larve?
Yeah, just a quick question, Ms. Potts. The Laterno and Fotska, the only two schools that are different, they're not 8:50 starts. Can you just remind me of why that is?
That's transportation tiering issue.
Yep.
Transportation issue, okay.
Anything further on start and end times, Mr. Aguirre?
So I'd assume if there's no changes, that that means that there would be no additional tiering options to save money?
Trying to work within the parameters of the FREA contract doesn't allow us to do any more tiering than we currently have. We had more tiering when we had the extended day, because obviously some schools lend itself to the additional tiering. When we got rid of this extended day in a couple more schools, we eliminated some opportunities. And because of trying to fall into the parameters given to us through the contract, we do not have any more options for tiering.
So I understand what you're saying. Looking at the number, that's pretty high, and everyone was concerned about how high the transportation was, just thinking proactively ahead, whether it's in negotiations or whatever. I'd never heard that we needed any different times in order to do the extra tiering. But you're saying now that if we had a, if we had more flexibility with some of the start and end times, we might be able to save some money on transportation?
So the tiering, you need a certain amount of time in between. So traffic issues, make sure the bus can get to the next pickup route, and get started and finish at that time. And when we got rid of those outliers, we eliminated three to four options for that tiering. So it does matter. And then, again, falling into the time that's in the contract, negotiated in the contract for the, for the start and end times of teachers, the window, so to speak, that we can start a day and end a day, leaves us the tiering issue. Now, there are other ways that, not tiering, but there are other ways that we can save with transportation money, but we do have to affect families with distances. And that will save us a lot more money than tiering.
Yeah, just, I was just asking for, internally, like you guys are talking about ways to save, and if that means that we have to either change a contract, do something, the time to do that would be sort of going forward for like a year ahead, so that we don't necessarily do it now, parents are already locked in. So I'm assuming that those things are happening, that we would know if that needs to be part of a negotiation to save money on the transportation which the city pays.
We could look at it, and we could see what, what the, what the opportunity would be if those times are bumped, one way or another.
Yeah, thank you.
We can look at that.
Thank you.
You all set?
Yep.
Any more discussion? Deb, do you have a motion and a second, Deb?
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second. Please call the roll, Deb.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.5 is a discussion and vote to approve the middle school ELA curriculum.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the curriculum? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks? Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Aguirre?
I just wanna say that when we went through this at the instructional subcommittee, the team that worked on this for an entire year, I think, did an excellent job. It was thoroughly done, it was vetted, it was trained. It was a, an example of how we should do It was thoroughly done, it was vetted, it was trained. It was a, an example of how we should do things when we're gonna create a curriculum or change something. So I wanted to give credit to Mrs. Kennedy and Mrs. Ponce and Dr. Curly for what they did, because this was how I would think that things go, and it goes nice and smooth. So good job. Thank you.
Thank you. 12.6 is a discussion and vote to approve a job description for the post-second-
So moved.
Pathway specials, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Question?
Mr. Agia.
Is this gonna be paid for from the Bala Foundation?
From, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
The Bala grant?
Bala grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it just says it right in the front, so, yes, thank you.
Any further discussion? Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.7 is a discussion and vote to approve the director of technology services job description as presented by Scott Cabral, chief information officer.
Motion to approve.
Tom Coogan, human resource director. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on this position?
Can we get a quick presentation?
Mr. Agia, Mr. Cabral, please.
So this position will basically oversee the technology services division of technology. Up until this point, I, as the CIO, have been maintaining and doing a supervisory role on that side as well. When I came to you about a year ago with the reorg, we had a similar position, and we split it up into two more technical positions. And the need is there to provide supervision in the day-to-day operations, something that I just, I can't stretch myself that thin anymore. So that's basically what this position will do. It will oversee, it will also be another technical mind on that side to deal with some more of the complex networking, cybersecurity issues, as well as a liaison between the SIMs and the instructional technology sides.
Question?
Mr. Agia?
So I know you were, it did seem familiar to me that we had talked about this position at one point, and some of my reservation in the positions is that, a lot of times, I said this at the last meeting as well, we get from one meeting, we say, we're not gonna fill this position, and we wanna use that money to create one another position, something else. So I, for one, vote for that based on eliminating one position to create two more, or whatever it is. And, and your department specifically, I think some of the things that are in here, we've been told we're gonna be done by other people that we hired, or some other way, whatever it is. And now I feel like this is another one, okay, we don't fill this, we'll fill that with a couple others, and now we're after the fact saying, let's fill it again. And I have some heartache over that.
So basically, you know, to take a look at the department, a department that we didn't have at the time, we were, you know, there were three individuals doing the work across the 17 buildings. We've now built a department from the ground up. My recommendation at that time was to split the two, you know, the position into two. But the need now to move forward and to, you know, run the millions of dollars in infrastructure improvements that we have planned, I need somebody in there day-to-day. I just, I personally cannot do it anymore.
So where in the org chart would this now fall? Like, what is the?
It's gonna be right below myself, and they will oversee the technology services division, basically mimicking what the director of instructional technology does, and then the SIMs coordinator in those buckets of technology. So right now, I am overseeing the technology services division day-to-day operations. And I'm not able to, you know.
And, and when you, I think it says in here salary range, but, so if you look at your org chart, and you're gonna have this position be equal to the director of instructional technology, that's what you're saying?
Correct.
That's a union position?
It's just in the same, they're the person that's gonna oversee that side of the department.
But that's a union position?
This is an S non-position.
But they're gonna be doing the same work as a union?
No, on a technical basis, they're, they're dealing with the technical side of the house.
Yeah. Calling it like, like it is. This position is gonna fall in your org chart equal to a position that's a union position called director of instructional technology. That's what you just said. What I'm saying to you is if it's a $75,000 to $90,000 salary, the salary doesn't match up to what you're even saying. So the union comes forward and says, we think this is a union position. I've said publicly that there's several positions in your department that should have been union positions already. I've said that over and over. So now this is gonna be one in the same. So we're gonna say, approve it, it's gonna be 75 to 90. The union makes a statement to say that they want it to be in the union. I would agree, I think it should be. So then, if it's equal to the other, other position, the other position gets 125 grand. So now we're saying to us, let's vote for this at 7592. Okay, yes, we vote yes. Within two months, the union's gonna go see you, you're gonna come back, and then they're gonna say, guess what? The position needs to be between 105 and 122, because that's the level of where you put in it. You're calling it a director. It's, if you're saying it's the same thing, it's gonna fall under the same thing. I don't understand how many more times we gotta keep going over the same issues, but you, you, the positions don't have to be, if the union's gonna make a request to have it be in the union, it's gonna line up somewhere, and you're just saying where it lines up. It doesn't match with the salary. And we were told that it was gonna go away.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Agia, I would need a little guidance from Attorney Assad on this. Last year, when this discussion came up about a number of positions that were potentially gonna be in the union, as, as the committee may or may not be aware at this time, there were a number of considerations that would factor into that. Number of days in the work year, salary structure, type of employee that they supervise, et cetera. Those are some matters that we're gonna be discussing in executive session a little later tonight. We agreed to put a one-year stop on that discussion and reevaluate at the end of this year. That's a matter for discussion with the union. We've already had that discussion going forward, and we anticipate beginning those, I'll call them negotiations, but those, those conversations shortly. So.
Right, and when you-
It's not gonna be the traditional structure that you're talking about.
I get it, but when, when the question's asked, we have an org chart. Everybody knows what an org chart is. We have a person that's called director of instructional technology. They work here, and they have six people working under them, whatever the number is. We're gonna create a position that the CIO just said is gonna be equal to that position with six or seven people working under them. What the heck do you think that they're gonna say? No, please pay them 75 grand, even though the union would pay them more. I don't see it.
I think a significant difference in, in the structure you're talking about, while there is a supervisor or director in that point with several staff members down below, the director of instructional technology supervises certified teachers, so it's a little bit different type of position than when we're talking about here. His, this position would be supervising technicians with a range of approximately 40,000 to 60,000. They're not certified, they're not necessarily university degree holders, et cetera. So it's a little bit different structure, but I do see the parallel between the two positions you're talking about.
And I'm sure you guys have worked this out. You must have talked about this several times in leadership meetings and HR meetings and the like. I'm sure that you've worked out what, what to call this, how to call it, what to do, worked out the potential pros and cons of how much the salary's gonna be, and then you, you fell on director of technology services. After what you just explained, this is the thought that we all, you put your minds together and you come up with to call it director of the same org chart as that. To me, that doesn't make any sense. So I'm not gonna be supporting this, but I think we're gonna come, we're gonna get this come back to us, and we're gonna have to pay more. But I still don't feel comfortable, and I, and I'll say this again, because it's, it's a fact, and Mr. Cabral just admitted it. We were told, don't fill this position, so we'll fill it with two others, and now, within a year, we're coming back saying, let's fill another one. Without a subcommittee meeting, without anything, let's just push it through the budget. So I'm not gonna be supporting it. If others do, then so be it. With that, I yield.
Anything further?
Did this go to, so this didn't go to the technology, is that where it would go, technology subcommittee?
It did not.
So it didn't go-
We haven't not had a meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We haven't had a meeting recently.
You haven't had a meeting for it to go to, okay. So, I'm sorry. So you're, you're stating the difference in price is basically because this position you're asking for are supervising people with different duties? Is that accurate?
It's more of a hands-on position, it's less of a strategic position than it is, more of an operational position. And we've had a number of discussions with the administrators' union about adding some of those operational technology head positions to their union, but it would not be in the same type of structure as the other administrators who are typically master's degree certified, hold a DESI license, and they supervise educational or professional level employees. This is a different type of skill, it's more of an operational position, supervising operational employees.
So this position doesn't require the same education level?
Correct.
Traditional educational level is the position that pays more?
Correct, and doesn't supervise licensed?
And doesn't supervise licensed personnel?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I had entertained a motion to table this and refer it to the technology subcommittee, so we can work out these kinks right now.
Second.
Second. Anybody have any further discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.8 is a discussion and an update on Power School as presented by Scott Cabral.
Do you want me to start it?
Oh, you want to go?
So I'll start.
Superintendent, please. Okay.
So, as you know, we have implemented Power School this year. Started off the year, migrated throughout the summer, and have been working through it. Here we are at the end of, approaching the end of the school year. It's been an investment. We have to make a decision as to, okay, so do we continue with this investment, or does it still make sense for us to do that? Or do we do what we need to do and look elsewhere? We have been, we surveyed our staff, we have had many, many internal meetings in regards to this, and weighed out the pros and the cons for both systems. We looked at our previous system, Aspen, as well as the current system, Power School. We also have had multiple meetings with both vendors to discuss our concerns, and really have been at a place where it's important for us to, to make the responsible, responsibly fiscal, fiscal, the right decision for the district. I will say that the easy decision would be to say, okay, let's leave everything as is, and we continue to move forward. But we have to decide whether we are getting our bang for our buck, so to speak, and, and say, is this the right system for us at this point? And going forward with another year, is it going to resolve some of the issues that we're seeing? Is it going to improve? Or are we, is it time to, to say? I, personally, I don't think that we can, I can advocate to enter into another year of a very expensive model and to continue to move forward and, and say that all of our concerns will be addressed moving forward. So certainly, Mr. Cabral can go into some details in regards to our thought process, but my recommendation would be that we don't enter into another contract with Power School in that we actually, we never let go of our Aspen contract, because we had it working side-by-side as we went through year one of implementation. So I would recommend that we revert back, our recommendations that we revert back to Aspen.
Mr. Cabral?
So basically, just building on what superintendent has said, we've done some surveys internally. 68% of the staff do not feel Power School is a good fit for the day-to-day operations. Some bullet points. At the early stages, the system went down way too frequently. Many people feel that the system is not easy to navigate. Many folks feel that the time it takes to complete a simple task is too time-consuming. We all have been speaking of the ongoing health module issues throughout the year, the IEP process time constraints, and basically, the bottom line from staff is 68% would really like to see us go back to X2. As we discussed throughout the year, we went with the base model of Power School, and in year two, we were gonna start to discuss customizations. That's the budget buster, in my opinion. In this current year, eight customizations will cost us just north of $110,000. The piece that I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around is they will also charge us maintenance fees moving forward for each additional year, and that could be upwards of $32,000 for just the customizations that I had listed in this report. And that's not gonna end the customizations, because we're just, we're not there. We're gonna need further customizations. We had a long, lengthy discussion regarding the health module with Power School, and up until right before this meeting, I received an email from Power School, and they recommend that we look at a third-party application. They don't even want us to, you know, further their relationship on their health module. I got that right before we started the meeting, and I, I'll be, you know, glad to share that with the superintendent, and she can share it with the committee. We have, in the last two months, Mr. Michael Azic is here, our support was much better, and I just feel like all of a sudden, their support has been dwindling. They're circling around issues. They're not helping us. The relationship that was sold to us was they were gonna help us through everything, and as of the last 30, 60 days, the support is not there. We're literally circling around the same issues, having a hard time getting, you know, tickets resolved, and then they resolve tickets and close the tickets, and we're not at a resolution. So in that process, Maria and I and members of the senior staff reached back out to follow X2. The first thing that we spoke about was how our relationship ended, because we just felt like we were in drastic need of support, and there was no support given, nor did they wanna help us. Their leadership team has changed. There was one individual at the meetings that was part of the original team, and they basically, fully, wholeheartedly agreed that, you know, they dropped the ball. They should have helped us. They, to reach across the table and, and to, to say that piece, for me, was huge. I was not part of the X2 world back then. We've had multiple conversations with them, we've met their new leadership team. They're willing to still maintain the 550 per student cost. They've basically, and it's all spelled out here, I can go into specifics if you'd like after questions. They will have us ready for the 2324 school year, because we still have the system right now. So you all remember that we maintained X2, so we could get to some of that data. So Mr. Michael Azic and our SIMs team have already put together a reentry plan, if it's the will of the committee to go back. Bottom line is, it's our responsibility as central office members to be fiduciary, you know, responsible there, and it's just not. It's gonna, the costs are gonna rise with Power School as we continue, and the, the cost with X2 because of that lifetime agreement. Year one, there's a bit of a lift, because they're gonna have to get us back up and running, but then year two, it drops to, we'd be paying $88,000 a year for a full SIS system, one that has been proven over the years, other than some hiccups in the last two or three, one that my team knows inside and out, one that 75% of the district staff members know inside and out. As Ms. Ponce stated, I just think, in order for us to make the right decision, yeah, there's, you know, we tried a system, it didn't work. We've tried many other systems in the past that didn't work. We need to do what's right for the district and-
Motion to support the superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, I think there could be a lot of discussion.
I just wanna say that it takes, I think, guts and integrity to go back and say, hey, we did this, it was, it did not work out in our best interests, and now we've gotta go to something different, rather than just sticking around and, and continuing to try to push forward with something. So I just, I appreciate that, that's all.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Just quick.
Do we have a motion, a second?
Yes.
Just quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. And I, and I wanted to just hop onto what Ms. Roderick said, and it, just the district acknowledging the dissatisfactory part of it as far as the faculty goes. You know, a lot of upset people this past year, and we've heard it, we've heard it from a lot of people, just, but I, I commend the superintendent, your team for, it does, it takes guts, and let's just move forward, let's figure out the next steps and how we're gonna make X2, you know, work for us. That's all. I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, I just wanna commend the superintendent for taking this on. I've been a vocal person, saying that I didn't think this was the right move. I didn't like the way that it was handled when it first happened. Let's just call it like it is. This was Matt Malone with a personal vendetta to try to get a different system in, because he didn't like the individual we had, period. I applaud Superintendent Ponce for making this decision, and I know moving forward that this team is gonna work together to make X2 the best system that we can. The only thing I would ask is that you implore upon them to continue the discounted rate, which I think you're gonna lock in. When I looked at the data, it said for the next school year, but you wanna, and the fine, the Power School one, we had a lot of fine print that people agreed to that never read it. But that needs to be continued, whatever that is, so that two years from now, you don't come back and say, oh, they raised it to 150, that's all. With that, I yield, and thank you for your consideration.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.9 is a discussion and vote to approve the supervisor of utility services job description as presented by Ken Pacico, chief operating officer, and Tom Coogan, human resource director.
So this job description is the last piece of that leadership team that was presented to you at the reorg. This individual will supervise the utility workers in all of the cafeterias, and part-time, both part-time and full-time workers. This person will be responsible for, as you can read in the, in the job description, the training of all of those people in those particular positions, the IMP, all of the different programs that are very necessary in the, in the food industry and also for the rest of the district. On charge of the fleet, the, this department has the, more vehicles than any other department in the district, so would be a full package that this person would be responsible for, and they would answer to Mr. Cutting overall with what he has now. So currently, these people are being led, sometimes, and depending on the building, by a lead, one of the lead cooks in the building, and very, very rarely by the food supervisors. So there's a, there's a disconnect with who they should be answering to, and this position will fill that gap.
How many people are we talking, Ken?
Talking five current full-timers, five full-timers that we're bringing in, part-timers, between 15 and 20 individuals across the district.
Thank you. Anything further? Mr. Agia?
This is a position that we already approved in the, this is part of the budget, it's a line item.
It was approved in, in the reorg.
Which therefore was in the budget?
Right.
What was the amount of money in the budget? Because I'm looking at what we have, and it says salary and benefits to be negotiated, and I'm pretty sure that when you had sent, it wasn't like a, I wanna say it was like between 60 and 70 or something like that. It wasn't 90 or 100, like if the director's gonna go-
It's not.
I think that's something that-
It mimicked, it mimicked some of the second shift supervisors. The dollars should mimic that.
Yeah, yeah. It shouldn't be anywhere- Yeah, yeah. It shouldn't be anywhere near what the director of maintenance-
Absolutely not.
There's only sixteen people.
Not close, right.
Or whatever it is.
Yep.
You know my stance on the utility worker. I think they should have been eliminated and never created. But that being said, they're here. So, when I'm looking at this, you just said that Mr. Cutting is going to, they're going to report to Mr. Cutting. Now, Mr. Cutting doesn't even work for us, and that's something that-
They're reporting to Mr. Cutting on a day-to-day basis, however, they will answer. They're not going to be part of the custodial supervision at all. So, if we're looking for a place to put them, and you would like them to answer to someone else, then they'll answer to me.
Well, I think the, it's not what I would want. I'm just saying it has to, so, when we did the reorg, and I had asked some questions about who reports to who and what and where, it was very confusing. But one of the things that came out of that was that we can't have our own people that are school department employees, reporting to a person who doesn't actually work for the schools, in my opinion. So, I think that's happening in other jobs in the nutrition department, which I think we need to stop. So, when we're adding a person as a director, I think we need to look at the whole nutrition department and see, like, Mrs. Ponce, do you think that Mr. Cutting should be, there should be our people reporting to Mr. Cutting as a non-school department worker?
I think day-to-day operations, that he is going to guide them and lead them in the work, but I think that supervisory, like, let's say, to evaluate, has to be for a public school.
It will be, yes.
So, there needs to be other changes, I guess, in that nutrition department that are going to come up at some point, I'm assuming, because that's not the case now.
The, the supervision of all of the workers is done by two individuals who are doing that work, and they are our employees.
And who supervises them?
This would be the third person. They would answer to Bob, but ultimately, because he's a non-four of a public school employee, it would land to the next supervisor, or Bob's technical supervisor would be me.
So, it begs the question of, we had talked about this earlier, where there's workers in there that don't report to, or at least haven't in the past. So, I had asked a question of, if somebody's got a conflict, where do they report? Your answer to me was that they were Bob Cutting, and I just think it's, it's probably just wording, but it needs to be just clear, so everybody knows who's, who's a direct reporter, who's your boss for evaluation, supervision, whatever. So, however you have to do, I think it just needs to be clear. But in this job description, it says in the end, number twelve, maintain all IPMs for food service and IPMs for the district. And I'm assuming that means preventive maintenance?
It's pest control.
Pest control. So, they would go to the school, like, you know, it says-
So, this person would be, whatever contract that we have, doing our pest control, this person would be that person who monitors them showing up, who looks at the invoices from that particular company, to see what work is being done, and where those phone calls came in. If there was an issue in a school, that would go to this person.
Yep. I, I don't disagree, and you know I've thought we needed that, but the title being nutrition is the only reason why I asked that, that that's like a district thing, but the title is cafeteria services, so I don't know if it's a big deal, but it's just, I guess you're going to put somebody in charge of it.
Yeah, I would just think that to have two people, a person on the school side and a person on the nutrition side, going to the same vendor, doesn't make a lot of sense. So, one person handling all of that documentation, to me, makes more sense.
And they would just obviously work with the man-
They would work with the director-
Maintenance manager would be in charge of the school.
Exactly. They would work with maintenance, they would work with the custodial director.
Like I said, I'm going to support this, but I don't necessarily support the overall. I think that still needs to be looked at by the Superintendent, because I don't think it's working as intended. With that, I yield.
Do I have a motion and second on that one, Deb?
Motion approved.
I got a motion. Mr. Agia, do I have a second? A second, Bailey? Call the roll, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve-ten is discussion and vote to approve the finance specialist job description, as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer, and Tom Coogan.
Motion approved.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Any discussion on this one? Mr. Agia?
Who is the current Chief Procurement Officer? Is that you?
It would be me right now, yes.
The, the only suggestion that I would make is to, I was looking at the job description, a good chunk of it is procurement.
Yes.
And as we had talked about before, like, when we add positions, there should be a rationale for why, and you've done that with the other, like payroll was more payroll.
The rationale, I believe, is behind the one-page, Mr. Agia.
There is.
Oh, behind the job description.
Not the rationale for the position, but I think in the rationale, it talks about one of the main pieces is to make sure that procurement is a big piece of it.
Yep.
And I think adding procurement to the job description title, or position title, will help to truth in advertising of what it is.
Okay.
Because, you might not believe this, but every time we vote for things, and people come to me and say, well, you added another position for that, or whatever, when I'm reading this, it really speaks of taking the procurement piece and having a specialist on that piece is-
It is.
Eighty percent of the job.
It is.
So, I would just recommend that we add procurement specialists or something, because I think it's going to explain what it is. You don't need another finance specialist, you need a procurement specialist. So, I'd like to make that a motion to change the name to procurement specialist, and I'd like to make that as a motion, and a motion approved.
I have a motion from Mr. Agia to amend it to procurement specialist. I have a motion and second. Deb, call the roll on procurement specialist.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, on the original motion, do I have a motion and a second on that one?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Deb, would you please call the roll on the approval of the position?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay. Twelve-eleven is discussion and vote to approve the prepaid tuitions, as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
So, I'm coming ahead.
Motion approved.
I have a motion.
Can I pull two of those, please? There's two contracts in there that I can't vote on. One, I sit on a board.
Okay. Let's, let's do it that way. Ms. Rodrick, which two are, which two are out?
Judge Rotenberg Center and SMEC Southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative.
Okay, so we have a hold for Ms. Rodrick's on her two, the Rotenberg Center. Which number are they?
It's all, it's all part of the whole package.
Okay, so-
So, it's part of the 2.1 million, so it's part of the whole package.
If I need to abstain from the whole thing, that's fine. But I just need to be clear about both of those.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm going to abstain.
Motion approved with the acceptance, exception of those two.
Second.
I have a motion and second on the, on those, and we also have one more abstention over here. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Yes?
Oh, no, I have to-
I thought the motion was to approve-
All except those two.
Except what they, those two, the SMEC and the-
Except for those two.
Right, so-
Hold on. We got a confusion.
Hold on. I thought we, you moved quick. I said I had a question. So, number four, Mayor, yeah, so I have to abstain from that. And number seven.
So, you're going to abstain from four and seven. So, marker is abstaining on four and seven on the description, and Ms. Rodrick's what-
Can you say the name?
People Inc., and number seven was the Durfee Cost Center? Is that the one you're concerned about?
So, number four is-
People Inc.
We're, we're on the one with the 2.1 million of out-of-district prepaids, and I don't see numbers.
Yeah, we're in the prepaid tuition.
I apologize.
Yeah, I moved up.
What a wrong face.
My apologies.
We both moved up over here.
My apologies.
All right, let's look at the prepaid. I'm sorry, Ms. Rodrick, do you have anything on the prepaid?
Yeah, she mentioned the two. So, I made a motion, everything except for the Judge Rotenberg and the SMEC.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, so we got everything but Judge Rotenberg and the SMEC.
So, I'll vote on those.
Could we get a vote on that, Deb? And then we'll-
I know, and then I-
Everything but those two.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, those other two that we have to vote on separately, could I get a motion and second on Rotenberg and the SMEC?
Well, can, those are two separate votes.
Motion approved SMEC.
Motion to vote SMEC. Do I have a second on SMEC?
Second.
Call the roll, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Abstain.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, on the Judge Rotenberg?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. All right, so now, we're going to twelve, point twelve is a discussion and vote to approve the third quarter budget transfers, as presented by Kevin Almeida.
Motion approved.
I have a motion and second. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Anybody have to hold off on these votes?
Number four.
Okay, so this is where Ms. Larve has to hold on number four.
And I believe number seven.
And number seven.
Well, then, I don't see numbers.
Are we motion to approve all but four and seven?
It's in the document that I prepared.
Oh, is that?
It's the first page of that section.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
People Inc.
Question?
JRI is there, Katie, but, Mr. Agia?
And what was the other one?
Yeah, so-
She's got four and seven that she's abstaining on. When we get there, she can't vote, Ms. Larve. Mr. Agia?
So, when you look at these, we've always funded these organizations, and at the beginning, we funded them for a certain reason or whatever, so I would like to have backup of what we've been spending the money on, and a recommendation from the Superintendent on what, why, and how. So, rather than just rolling it over, some of these, I personally like better than others, but it, it comes from the administration, and we've been just kind of rolling them, rather than having a, not just a presentation. I want the Superintendent and her team to come before and say, I think we should spend X dollars on this, this, and here's what we're going to get for that money, so that it's a little clearer than what we have had in the past. Any information that you have related to the past, if you can send it, that would help me personally.
What are you, how many years are you looking for, Mr. Agia?
I think we've only been funding them for two years. I remember one year-
It's been a while.
Coaching for Change or-
I'm talking about all the nonprofits. We used to do them in a bundle.
It's been a, it's been a while.
And I did a, I had been one to say, why don't we spend it out of the extra money, so that it would be paying for next year? But that was last year. So, I'd like to look at it in a little bit of a more thorough-
Sure.
Example of what it's for. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. Do I have a motion and second, Deb?
You do.
I do. All right, so we're going to call the roll on all except for-
People Inc.
Four and seven.
Four and seven.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number four, I'm looking for a motion and a second on the school committee cost center.
So moved.
Covers a number of things. I got a motion-
Second.
And a second. Item four, Deb, would you please call-
Question?
Mr. Agia, sorry.
Just along the same thing, just looking at the wording of a placeholder. I would just like it to be very clear that the committee's going to vote on each of those individually-
They are, yes.
-before they get implemented, even if it takes a little longer.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Abstain.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item seven is the Durfee cost center. I'm looking for a motion and a second on that one also.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Upstayed.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. I have a number of retirements, resignations.
Motion to approve thirteen point one, point two, point three, and point four.
I have a motion to approve all of the informational part of the packet. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number fourteen, new business. Do we have any new business to come before the committee tonight? Hearing none, we have a request for executive session. Want to read the reasons, Mr. Agia?
Sure, sure. Mass General Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-seven, to review and approve the executive session minutes for April ten, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting of the school committee. Mass General Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Forward Administrators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees, the forward school system, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational, physical therapists, specialists, the teaching profession represented by the Forward Educators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil clerical employees of the forward school system, represented by the Forward Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, the chair has determined that the, no possession may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property located at twenty-five oh one, South Main Street, Forward Mass, as the chair has declared an open meeting, may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee. National Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, and to conduct contract negoti, and/or conduct contract negotiation with non-union personnel, including Grace Costa, administrative assistant, Paula Sawes, executive assistant to the superintendent, Sandra Silva, payroll manager, community facilitators, instructional support liaisons, early childhoods support staff, Jesse, Gonzales, Guzman, Darlene Hanson, Hassan, and Kelly Pereira, technically, Technology Department, computer technician, Steven, Anctil, Paul Tukowski, Jason Olivera, Jason Reeves, Chad Elves, Devin Costa, Brittany Estrella, and Patrick Tavarez, school information system staff, including Brian Michael Azak, Sims Coordinator, Melissa Pereira, data specialist and Chow Tang data technician, Fred TV staff, including Renee Kochman, Director of Operations and Media, Pauline McGrath, General Manager, Pamela Nickerson, media editor and instructor, Craig Salvador, production technician, and Kevin Varrow, community field coordinator, Bruce Assar, Bruce Assar, legal counsel to the school committee, Dr. Amy Braun, Ronhardt, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Strategic Integration. We would reconvene, there may or may not be statements at that time.
Can I get a motion and a second to go into executive?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
We're back in order. Deb, could you please call them?
Mr. Agia.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Larrabee. Ms. Larrabee.
Ms. Larrabee.
Here. Ms. Pereira.
Here.
Ms. Rogers.
Still here.
Mayor Coogan.
Here. Anything further to come before the committee?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
A motion to approve the executive session minutes for April 10th, 2023, regular school committee meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes.
Mayor, motion to approve contract of Amy Braunhardt as negotiated.
Second.
Any discussion on the contract? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the contract of Bruce Saad as negotiated.
Second.
Any discussion on the contract? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes.
And one more, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Motion to approve the value of real property located at 2501 South Main Street, the lease as negotiated.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Anything further to come before the committee?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion.
Second.
Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Adjourned.